Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Corredera Planning Commission for Tuesday, December 12, 2017. This is a regular meeting. We always start at seven now, so please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the roll, please.
Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Thank you. All right, at this point in the meeting, anybody who wishes to comment on something that is not on the agenda tonight may step up to the microphone. You have three minutes to make a statement, state your name and where you're from. And there's no early risers, going once, twice, three times, so there is no public comment tonight on something that is not on the agenda. So we'll close that and move directly to our continued hearing. This is for 8 Westward Drive. This is a design review application, PL 2017-0045, for a new 4,441 square foot, two-level, single-family dwelling at 8 Westward Drive. It's a continued hearing because we made some requests of the applicant, and they're back before us again, and Mr. Bush will explain all of that in fine detail.
Thank you. So as you mentioned, this is a design review application that was heard back in September. At that time, the Planning Commission, as well as staff, had some comments in some direction provided to the applicant for the application at that time, with kind of raising some issues of that hearing with the previous design relating to massing and design and kind of the appearance of the overall size and how that floor area was distributed over the lot, as well as issues with the amount of the view that was being blocked for the upslope neighbor at 10 Westward. The applicants have worked through some revisions, some significant revisions to their application in response to those comments, and I will kind of briefly go over some of those and then provide ample time for the applicants to speak for themselves here as well. And we'll get that. Oh, the screen's going here. Okay. And although we've discussed this before, I'll just give a little bit of background so we have some more site context here. So we're looking at 8 Westward Drive, which is on the far east side of town, just above Paradise Drive, two lots up the Westward Drive there from Paradise. This is a lot that's quite similar to many of the other lots in the immediate vicinity. It's sort of a, you know, terrace building footprint as you move your way up the street to the south-southeast. As I mentioned, it's the second house going up the hill there, and it's built on the level portion of the lot with kind of a rear yard that slopes up toward Privateer Drive and slopes up toward 10 Westward to the south, and then, of course, slopes down toward 2 Westward there. I just wanted to provide some photos to give you some context of the neighborhood, some of the design, sort of the layout, as you work your way up and down the street. This is 10 Westward, which is the house just above. Here's looking to the east. As you can see, there's kind of a dominant pattern here where most of the houses are two-story houses, and the second story is located above the garage and sort of steps down with the lot, like you see here. One of the most recent kind of significant remodels on the street was the neighboring property to the north, which is 2 Westward, which is approximately, I think, 4,200 square feet, and that was approved in, I think, 2006 with revisions made in 2009, I believe. And that is probably the most similar in scale to what's being proposed here at 8 Westward. Here is, this was a photo taken back in September, of the east elevation of the subject property. As you can see here, it's sort of elevated above the lot. And so I wanted to go over some of the changes by comparing the last sort of design iteration to the current. Here's a rendering of what that looks like again from the east, the previous design that was considered in September. Some of the issues that were raised at that time were that sort of north elevation or the right side of the proposed design here, and how massive it appeared from both the street, because it's sort of elevated above the street to begin with, and then it was, you know, around over 27 feet. It sort of hung off the edge there on the right side. So that, as you'll see, is one of the most significant revisions. They've both kind of removed significant massing from that north elevation and kind of created a more stepped-down design here that's a bit more similar to what we saw in the other photos of existing floor plans. Again, these houses were built, I believe, in the early '60s, and a number of them, such as 2 Westward, have been, you know, we've seen some significant remodels in the last 10 years or so. Here's the revised rendering. As I mentioned, that north elevation has seen the most significant change. Instead of sort of the matching gabled roofs on the south and the north sides now, you have it sort of stepping down. This structure matches the peak height of the existing house. I think it's around 25 and a half feet. But obviously, you can see that the ridge in the center has been raised significantly. I think the ridge on the existing house is around 17 feet. So although the peak height of the total structure isn't exceeding the existing, the house overall is getting quite a bit taller. So we'll just move on to the footprint here. So you're looking, you know, top-down view, comparing the existing footprint, which is shown here with the little crawling ants, to the proposed footprint here. So you can see the garage sort of on the lower left. You can see how they've extended the footprint to the south, and they've also extended out to the rear, into the rear yard, which is the top of which you're standing here. This is just the lower floor plan. So moving to the upper floor plan, whereas the previous was sort of a comparison, existing footprint and the proposed, the applicant has also provided drawings, I think Sheet A5 here, showing the previous floor plan that was considered in September with what is being proposed now. And here you can see that on the south elevation, which is to the left, it's been shifted two feet to the north. You see that back portion to the top left there was moved to the east, nine and a half feet. That was done in part to sort of open up the view corridor for the upslope neighbor in response to comments provided at the last hearing. And you'll see a number of other changes here. This is obviously available in the plans that were provided to you as well. Here you can see on the upper floor that that north elevation on the right has been shifted to the south, and that's what provides that sort of stepped appearance. Now looking at the lower floor plan, you can see that some of that floor area that was eliminated from the upper floor has now been located in the, on the lower floor into the rear yard. So it kind of, you know, the house has been decreased by around 250 square feet from the prior proposal, but it appears from the street to be a significant, a more significant change than that. And one of the ways that they've sort of maintained their floor area, but diminished sort of the bulk and the massing of the house, was to place some of it into the rear yard, where it's really, you know, seen and experienced primarily by the owners, by the occupants. Now, just quickly looking at the existing elevations compared to the proposed, here you see that they've created that kind of step-down on the right side there, and they raised the roof ridge throughout the middle of the house, but at the same time, the peak height hasn't, has not increased over the existing. Looking at the west elevation, which is the rear of the house, this is what you'd see if you were standing in the backyard. Again, you can see the addition of the floor area over the middle of the house on the second floor there. And looking at the south elevation, this would be, some of these are sort of impossible views because of the topography of the lot. This isn't exactly how you'd see it, but this is if you were standing on the south side yard. You can see how it's extended to the left or to the west there on the lower level. And also, just to kind of clarify, on the right here, you see a post coming down. That portion of the upper floor is sort of floating above and extends out past the lower floor. So that's one of their, kind of a design feature there. And then again, on the north elevation, you see the comparison here. And what you're seeing on the right side here is sort of a sunroom that's existing that would be removed. A majority of the house would be demolished, primarily the garage would be maintained. So what you're seeing here is primarily a new, you know, a new structure throughout. Sort of, as discussed at the last meeting in September, there were some issues raised. Part of that was the massing, which staff finds had been significantly improved through those design changes, through the step-back from the north elevation by locating some of the floor area into the rear yard on the lower floor, and through some of those other design changes. What sort of remains as a discussion item is this question about view impacts and whether this proposed structure would constitute a significant and adverse view impact, which is finding, Design Review Finding III, which is one of the eight findings that have to be made to approve a project. So here are some photos that were provided. Just going back here, some items have been provided for you on the dais prior to the meeting, and some of those include these photos that are being shown here. These were taken by staff two weeks ago.
And they live there in the back as well.
Yeah, and there were copies provided at the back. All the things that were provided to you have also been provided at the back of the room. And those include letters of support from several neighbors, photos taken by staff that are being shown right now, as well as, I think, minutes from the September meeting. So just wanted to highlight some things here. This is what, this is the view, or one of the views when you're standing on the raised patio at 10 Westward, looking out to the north. As you can see, there's a number of trees there. There's the foothills to the north, looking towards San Quentin, and portions of the marsh and the bay are shown here. This is standing next to the fence. The fence relative to the patio is maybe around, you know, four feet above the patio. So this is when you're standing at the edge of the patio, sort of looking over that fence toward the north. And this also gives you, you know, sort of a unique vantage point to see how the, you know, floor plan has been extended into the rear yard as well. But what you can see here and what was raised in the staff report is just the fact that, obviously, a portion of that bay water view would be blocked from the proposed structure. This is sort of just providing a little context of where that is in the yard. In the majority of the yard, the backyard of 10 Westward, you cannot see the bay views. They're really limited to when you're in that corner along the north side of the lot, primarily when you're standing on that patio there. Again, here's just a step-back view. Just of note here, these are the story poles from September in this particular photo, but this just provides you with that context of where that patio is located in the yard and just how you can see from the middle of the yard primarily trees. Again, it was alluded to in the staff report, but these are the windows that you can look out from, from the upper floor. There's sort of corner windows on the northeast side of 10 Westward, and this just shows how, along with this photo, which is the same windows, just looking north, there are views of the bay, of the marsh, and of the foothills, and the trees in the neighborhood that would be maintained and would not be significantly affected by the proposed structure.
I have a question about the photos here.
Yes.
I think that Jennifer wants a bit of clarification.
Absolutely.
About the photos.
Doug, do you have the same, if you go back to the photo showing from the deck where you're standing, this one, do you have the same view from the first hearing with the old story poles?
I do. I don't know if they're...
It's not critical if it's not easily accessible.
Okay. I don't know if they're available in the packet.
Okay.
Or in the presentation, but they, I mean, we do have them on record, of course.
No, okay.
All right, thank you.
So, you know, ultimately, staff finds that the changes that were made to this design have significantly improved it and have responded to both, you know, staff's feedback and the feedback of the commission, but what still remains is the question of whether this is a significant and adverse view impact. Staff has kind of provided some food for thought in the staff report, considerations for kind of evaluating the views. Some of those things include the fact that, you know, the views of the water specifically appear to be what would be most impacted here, and those views of the water would be specifically from a, you know, a specific location in the yard and under specific conditions. You can't see it when you're sitting on the patio. You can see it when you're standing, for example, and you're really seeing it from that, when you're looking over the fence toward that north elevation. At the same time, you know, it's understood that, you know, from the owner's perspective, this is absolutely an important view and one that they enjoy, which is, you know, what makes this such a difficult kind of consideration and thing to evaluate, and that's why it's evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And one of the attachments that was provided kind of goes over some of the language in the general plan and the zoning ordinance relating to views to provide some guidance, but it's also understood that this doesn't, you know, provide a fixed, you know, step-by-step guide to determining whether that view is significant. That's why we evaluate it on a case-by-case basis, and that's why we're here to discuss it tonight. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Doug. At this point, do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff? Charles?
No.
No. Jennifer?
No, thanks.
Phyllis?
No.
Dr. Bundy, no. Okay. So I don't either. So we would go directly to the applicant's presentation? Is that what you want to do? Do you want to go directly to the applicant presentation now? Do they want to make a presentation on this?
Chris Skelton on behalf of the property owners...
Test, test.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Skelton. It's my pleasure to appear this evening on behalf of the property owners of 8 Westward. Doug, thank you very much, and to all of staff for the thorough presentation, very, very detailed, and I want to piggyback on some of the elements that Doug has already raised. The two primary points of feedback that we heard and received from the commission, from staff, and from the public last week was to revisit the bulk and mass and to evaluate and reduce view impacts to the upslope neighbor. Doug's done a terrific job of really going through all of the massing elements. I'll briefly touch on those and then hopefully focus on the evaluation of the view impacts. So the redesign project eliminates approximately 230 square feet of building area. The removal of 500 square feet from the second floor. You might look at those two numbers and say, how do you reconcile them? As Doug alluded to in his presentation, some of the massing from the second floor was shifted down to the first floor, namely in that southwestern corner, where we believe it is the least impactful, not perceived from the street or from any of the surrounding neighbors. We pulled back the northern second-story element by approximately 12 and a half feet in the narrowest sense. That was in consideration twofold, one to the northern property owner. Staff had made, alluded us to the fact that the two-story massing on the downslope side was overbearing, and also to the southern neighbor, by pulling that massing back, you actually indirectly open up more of the view corridor as well. We then pushed the southern elevation in to the north by approximately two feet. Now, the last two items that I've identified, what is happening there is we are consolidating the second-story massing closer to the center of the property, pulling it back from the neighbors and creating somewhat of a wedding cake effect. It's more exaggerated on the northern side because that's the way the slope falls, and so we wanted to respect the natural topography in the neighborhood. The lower southern elevation, second-story ridge was slightly reduced, and really, one of the main criteria in doing that, again, trying to preserve the light, air, and view for the upslope neighbor, and to respect the existing conditions. As Doug said, there's no net increase in overall height, even though portions of the structure, especially at the center of the building, are taller than they are as they exist today. And then we slid the southern second-story element east by approximately nine and a half feet. Now, that was one of the biggest points of contention that we heard at the last hearing, that southern second-story element and how it projected into the rear yard, into the west, and that impact to the neighbor from the raised patio in the corner of his rear yard. And so by sliding that out, eliminating that deck off of the master, that nearly 10 feet actually had a real significant impact in favor of the neighbor's view and in adjusting the overall massing of the structure. I want to touch on the framework for views because Corredera, quite frankly, it's a little confusing. I had to sort of write, rewrite, try to digest all of this. And in my opinion, Design Review Finding III is the only tool to apply for tonight's evaluation of views, and that is that the project, and that's the finding that you have to make that Doug put on the screen earlier, but to reiterate, it's the project will not significantly and adversely affect views, sunlight or privacy of nearby residents. Sunlight and privacy are not at issue, have not been raised. So we're really looking at views. Views, unfortunately, is an undefined term under the municipal code, and there is some language that can guide you in the general plan, but it's really important to note, view impact is tolerated. It's considered, it's contemplated, and so the finding is significant and adverse view impacts. The town does not have an explicit view ordinance, like surrounding jurisdictions. As Doug said, it makes that a little bit difficult for you guys as being the decision-makers because you don't have a strict statutory framework to say, views are protected from this space but not this space. This is the type of view that we like to protect, monuments, long distance, short distance, and other criteria, objective criteria. So it is challenging. Views are protected under the municipal code in a separate chapter, under the Trees Chapter. I've unfortunately had to deal with that in my professional capacity before. It is like other jurisdictions in laying out criteria. Those criteria are not applicable tonight, although I will identify in a future slide how it could be triggered. There is one point that was raised in some of the public communication, and it may have been raised in the staff report, but 1830-030. That provision does not apply here, all right? That provision outlines the design review guidelines, and it says, "In bayfront or water-oriented residential areas, preservation of view corridors to the bay should be attained wherever possible." The staff report is very explicit, and I went through this last time, so I won't belabor it. These homes in this subdivision that was created in 1964, they orient to the street and not to the bay, so they're not bayfront water-oriented residences. The Town of Corredera does have overlay zoning for various districts. Those overlay zones, the Bayland Natural Habitat overlay or the Scenic Overlay District, those don't apply here either. They're not, this property and the surrounding properties are not a part of it. And finally, the California Supreme Court has said that there's no inherent right to a view over an adjacent property unless there is a statutory framework by the local agency, which there is not here. So that unfortunately is my convoluted summary of why we are left with Design Review Finding III as our only tool for evaluating this and its significant and adverse effect of views that we're looking at. In the staff report, there was one line that caught me off-guard, and so I want to make sure that we're not misguided here. And it effectively says that the commission may wish to consider a balancing of whether to eliminate a single bedroom as a minimal concession in relation to an impact on the view from the neighboring property. In the very next sentence, it says, "The commission is tasked with determining whether the view blockage is significant and adverse," which mirrors the language from the finding that is necessary for tonight's decision. Statement one is not a correct standard for the review of view impact. It is not a balancing act. It's not what is the hardship to someone and what is the benefit to somebody else. It's whether or not there is a significant and adverse view impact. Doug and staff, I think, has done a terrific job in identifying on page five of the staff report a series of elements. They're not necessarily criteria, but they're observations that are both for and against a view impact. It's up to you guys to decide whether it is significant and adverse. I want to walk through a couple of these and give you some visual representations to contextualize them. Again, Westward Drive homes were not designed to take advantage of views. The pattern of the subdivision is very representative of that. There was a slide in September that I showed, showing all of the orientations for all of the surrounding properties, none of which are oriented towards the bay, all of which are oriented towards the street. And I think the street frontages that Doug showed earlier reiterate that point. Views from the upper-floor windows in the living room of 10 Westward are limited primarily to near-field views of neighborhood trees, which would not be significantly impacted by the project. Again, it seems like the views from the residence, excuse me, are not at issue. It's really the view that's isolated from a limited corner in the northwestern portion of the upslope neighbor's property. Views from 10 Westward bathroom are not an active-use area and are not considered significant views. I'm thankful that we can hopefully all agree on that. What is a little bit confusing here, though, is what is an active-use area? We know, maybe it's like one of the Supreme Court justices says about porn, we know it when we see it. A bathroom area is not an active-use area. I wrestle with whether a small corner of an outdoor area on a neighbor's rear patio is, and I submit that I don't think that it is an active-use area. And the reason being that this is not a significant and adverse view impact is really this last point that Doug highlights, and he says, "The views from the rear patio are visible only from a very limited portion of the yard, only when standing, and primarily when the viewer is standing on a raised patio." I don't have the same benefit of photos from the neighbor's property, but if you can take yourself back 10 minutes to Doug's presentation, and there's a wide-angle view, and it shows that patio, and you have to look, how does that raised patio function? And when I was looking at that photo, I said, well, how are the chairs oriented? One chair is oriented back towards the photographer, away from the view, back to the view. Another is oriented directly towards the house. Both of the chairs are oriented towards a fire pit, which is the central theme of that patio. That is the function of that space. And so I think that reiterates why any view obstruction is not a significant and adverse view obstruction, because the space which it's taken from and the function of that Conversely, Doug points out that the view, in the staff report, excuse me, that the views are clearly important and valued by the property owner, as indicated in multiple conversations with staff and the written comments provided. You have heard me talk a lot, and I understand that some people believe talk is cheap. You have heard me talk a lot, and I understand that some people believe talk is cheap. What does the owner do to show you how clearly he values the importance of that view? This was part of the objection letter in September, showing the view impacts. And you can see that the story poles from this angle, they look pretty bad. But if this is a view that is clearly important and desirable, the trees would be removed or trimmed, the five-and-a-half, borderline-six-foot-tall fence would probably be four feet, and it would probably be a mesh or a wire or a hogwire or some other see-through transparent material to really capture and utilize those views. And so I don't think that there is alignment and consistency with what's being said versus what's been done in the past. The staff report estimates that roughly 50% of the Martian foothill views to the north would be blocked by the northwestern room on the subject property, the new design. There's nothing to objectively quantify the 50%, and in fact, the uphill neighbor estimates that it's roughly 75% of the bay views. So I climbed on the roof of 8 Westward, and it was quite a scene, and I took a photo. And this is the back-raised patio as best as I could capture it. And I got, I got three photos that I want to show you showing view angles, because anyone can take a photo and they can try to manipulate it through zoom or through angle or through height. And so I want to give you a cross-section of the views, and I took three from these three positions. The reason why I chose these positions, one, the first arrow that is, excuse me, the first arrow is where that brick patio on the upslope neighbor, it walks out to then take a right-hand turn to get to this raised patio area. The second one is of approximately the same alignment of the patio. Again, note the patio furniture oriented towards the fire pit. And then the third one is actually from the very far edge of the fence, and the reason being that there is a little bit of flat area, and if the neighbor wanted to expand this area and improve upon it and highlight the views, then this is also an area that could be taken advantage of. This is the view photo angle number one. And mind you, I'm on 8 Westward side of that fence, so unfortunately, I couldn't capture precisely what's being viewed, but it's at approximately six feet tall. I held it up a little bit because the slope is a little bit higher. Six feet tall on the 8 Westward side of that fence. I think there's no view blockage based on the existing conditions. Again, this is approximately in the same alignment from September as what I'm showing you right here, just a little bit further forward. View photo angle two here, which is lining up with the patio, and this is, you know, a crude version of the view obstruction right here. You'll note that there's still significant views of not only close but long-range views of the bay, of the hills, and of the trees. And finally, view angle three. And I want to highlight a couple of other features that are important for analyzing views. What are the current obstructions, and how do they already obstruct a view? You'll see that there are trees in the view corridor. The town has a ordinance that deals with it. If this is such an important view, and I've been caught up in one of these disputes before, these can be claims that are asserted against neighbors, and I'm not an arborist, I haven't evaluated these trees, but they may qualify as undesirable trees and be subject to removal in favor of a view. I also highlight the fact that I think there's a transformer in there, and, you know, it's something that they can work with PG&E in relocating. This is what would be the corresponding view obstruction, taking into account the other existing obstructions. I'm loath to rebut a comment in the public letter, but I have to identify one inconsistency. At no time before either the submittal of the original proposal or submittal of the current proposal did the applicant make any effort to determine the impact of their proposals on our house. I'm going to hand out an email thread if you're interested in seeing it. Specifically, there's an email on October 28th where the project architect reached out with a schematic design before resubmitting and was wholly rebuffed. The neighbor said wasn't interested. Doug was copied on all future correspondence, and it didn't make it into the packet because it probably wasn't relevant, but when I saw the comment, I feel I want to round out the entire picture, so I'll provide you with the email thread and let you know that we've tried to work with the uphill neighbor and made significant concessions in the design to address these concerns. So in conclusion, there are many letters of support that I hope were either presented on the dais or incorporated into the staff report. We were not able to work everything out with the upslope neighbor, although I think we've done a significant task in making large modifications. These are not nips and tucks, nine-and-a-half feet, 12-and-a-half feet, shifting over, you know, 25% of the upper-floor massing, eliminating floor area. And I think that we've listened carefully to the commission, we've worked closely with staff, and we've tried to work with the neighbors in addressing everyone's concerns. The real tension that we wrestled with was, you know, the privacy, the view, the second-story development, preserving a 1964 pattern of development, and whether that's the right or wrong thing to do. And we tried to really consolidate the second-story massing into the center of the property. So in conclusion, we're requesting that the commission approve the project as submitted tonight, and if you have any specific questions, happy to answer, turn it over to someone who can.
Well, while you're there, I think we'll take the opportunity to ask you some questions. Now, I certainly have some questions for you, but I will turn to my right and start with Phyllis and see if she would like to ask you any questions at this point.
I do like the design. I think it's a great improvement. I'm glad we asked you to make changes. I have a question which may not make much sense, I'm just curious. The original submission was a five-bedroom, five-and-a-half-bath house. With the redesign, why was another bedroom added?
Well, in presenting architectural drawings, rooms have flexible uses. One room, I believe, is referenced as a media office, and whether or not that ends up being the media room, or the office, or an informal living room, or a library, is to be determined. And the back, I think, bedroom
Yeah, there's just one in the back.
Is one that, again, would also serve as kind of a flex room, whether or not it's used for an office, or a library, or something more formal, where the owner could actually, it's designed to be almost like a retreat room. It's cut off almost entirely from the rest of the floor of the house, and so, you know, I think that space could have just as easily been relabeled as something else and not a bedroom, but
Well
It was labeled a bedroom.
I'll re-ask, why did you add an extra room then? Not you, but
Yeah.
Why did the owner desire to add an extra room from before when it had been questionable about, you know, the number of rooms blocking the view?
I don't have in front of me a specific room calculation from the first submittal to the second submittal. I'm not sure that there has been an actual increase in number of rooms. There has been a decrease in overall floor area, and there was a decrease in second-story massing. Part of that massing was reshifted to the first floor, and in part because that was something that we heard not only from the commission, but in September contemporaneously, the council was passing an ordinance that was encouraging, well, maybe not encouraging, that was allowing for more lock coverage. And the idea being, take some of the massing off of second stories and shift it to first stories.
We encouraged that.
Yep.
And, no, I agree with the point you were making from the staff. I mean, I, speaking for myself, do not think views from bathrooms are important, and I've heard it too many times. And as far as the patio goes, and this is an issue that's come up before, but there have been people of a patio that's oriented towards the view, and not having been able to go and see it myself, just going by the photographs and by staff report, the only way to see this particular view is standing there directly by the fence, in the corner of the yard. It's not something that, when you're sitting around and stuff, that it's obvious. So I understand what you were saying, and I think I could go along with the findings.
All right. No other questions for this gentleman?
No other questions.
Dr. Bundy, any questions for this presentation?
Yes, in regard to that northwest room or bedroom, did the architect look at reorienting that to the first floor, expanding more of the first floor, so that that view corridor would not be blocked to the extent that it is?
Yeah, we actually played around with three or four different schemes, and one in particular, if you recall the prior design, the rendering at least, think about it conceptually like an H for the second floor, sort of two, a north wing, south wing, and a corridor connecting. We thought about pulling it closer to the street to allow that view corridor. We thought about narrowing it down, which is basically where we ultimately ended up. But there was a lot of push and pull with all of the design decisions. One of the big ones was by taking that nine-and-a-half feet and sliding it to the east, that was what we observed to be one of the most significant changes. What we also discovered by doing such a significant concession with that big slide and overall reduction of floor area to the master wing was that it did, it did, oh, it did reveal a residual view blockage. So to accommodate that, we actually, we pulled that northern elevation. Originally, we were looking at pulling it three, four feet to accommodate the actual vertical massing breakup as a key component, but when we saw the background and the residual view blockage, that's when we said, three or four feet isn't going to cut it. And so that's why we pulled it back so significantly, 12 and a half feet. And I think, I hope that kind of answers your question, that we looked at alternatives, and it seemed like no matter what we ended up doing, there was going to be some view impact. And as I pointed out early in the slide, the findings do allow for some impact, and the question is, is it significant and adverse? And we believe that the combination of shifting that southern second-story element and really pulling, I mean, literally cutting off the H for the northern, the northern second-story feature is completely removed, and you're left with really that that single corridor element, that that eliminated any significant and adverse impact.
You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Charles, any questions for this gentleman?
So I think I read somewhere that there was a statement that the architect actually went and saw the view from the neighbor's yard.
Saturday?
Yes. And the neighbor claimed that the architect made a statement that he was not aware that it had, that the redesign would have so much impact on the view. So is that a, is that a statement that the architect made? Okay.
For the record, he said no.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I need to understand that. I need to understand both sides of that statement. So then my other question is also to the architect. Given that that view, wherever it is, however it's deemed significant or not, is there a solution in the current design, an option that then could, that you've either looked at and are aware of, or that you could redesign and adjust it so that it could not block, you know, 50, two-thirds, whatever the significant portion of it is, even if it's lesser, but hopefully none, so that it's very easy on the commission? Is that something the architect feels can be done?
I can actually answer, just because, really quickly, we've talked about it. One feature that we looked at was creating an outdoor loggia, an outdoor deck area, and having this be sort of a translucent area. Quite frankly, we didn't think that that was going to be acceptable either to the commission or to the neighbor, even though it would eliminate vertical mass, it would encourage unnecessary privacy intrusion, noise issues, having an elevated second-story space. And it would be terrific. It would literally be a covered outdoor patio for that other bedroom in that area. But we thought that the overall neighborhood impacts and the use of the space would probably be deemed incompatible with other land-use tools. One other feature that, I'm sorry, that I want to identify is, and I'm sorry that this wasn't represented or called out properly, is the story poles are marked to, pardon me, the story poles are marked to the roof eave. They should have been marked to the building edge. The roof eaves are two feet. And so this is an unfortunate circumstance for us, because it exacerbates the perceived impact, that these are now two feet closer into the view corridor than they otherwise should be. And it wasn't, it wasn't worth us scrambling to shift it back over and then someone saying, "Well, what kind of games are you playing? This is outrageous, you know? It's a bait and switch." So we left it at the eaves, but it represents a more significant impact than will actually be borne out if it's approved.
Charles, it's a roundabout way of answering your question, but
I'm sorry.
Do you feel that that answers your question?
Yeah, he answered the question. I think that, you know, if it's, that it doesn't kill the project to maybe address that view.
Right, okay.
So.
Any other questions for these guys?
I don't have any questions.
No questions? Okay. Charles?
No, no questions. Thank you.
All right, so a couple of things. You make a number of statements that have to do with land use planning or certain things and so forth. These guys have to answer those questions. And I want you, I would like you to back up your slide presentation, back to your presentation about views right here. So you delve into a number of things, and these are your viewpoint
Correct.
That you present. They are not necessarily the viewpoint of the town planning department or what we must adhere to. So you're making a number of statements up there that are a reach from fact of the planning code or the general plan.
And I don't have a black robe yet.
No, so, you know, up here, yes, in the first part, I would generally agree with you that there, some views are undefined and some impact is tolerated. That is probably true. Then when you get down here and you say, in your report, you identify that the homes are not oriented towards bay views. That is certainly the case, but that makes no difference about whether somebody has a view or not. If the home is oriented toward the street and they have a view in their backyard, or they have a view from a window, it's irregardless of how the homes are oriented. It's a view they have.
Can I also add to that? Because also, we're not even talking about the home in itself and its orientation, and I found in policy CD 2.5, under the view policies and guidelines, we also have to consider patios. And so the patio view is definitely oriented in that, and so to me, it's interpreted completely different. And so when you propose that as though that's the way we should interpret it, it actually makes it more difficult for me to make my findings, and I just wanted to state that.
Yeah, well, thank you. I think that's a valid point, that that's missing from here. It's in the staff report about the patios and so forth. So yes, the view should be attained wherever possible. We're not in bayland, we're not in scenic. Now, we get down to that last bullet point, no inherent right to the view over adjacent property in California, Wolford versus Thompson. I'm going to turn to our attorney, and I'm going to say, "Really?"
California Supreme Court, that's what the CIA stands for.
You know, that's a large statement that we would be saying, we wouldn't be able to consider that in half of the projects we look at. So, you know, I don't know.
And I presented that same point in September.
Yeah. So, you know, I kind of go, really? If we were truly considering, saying that we can't consider a view blockage, then where would we be? I don't know where we'd be. And maybe you don't want to delve into that. But it's a significant piece of claim here that this man is saying that we, that somebody doesn't have a right to a view of the bay over adjacent properties.
May I clarify? In my presentation, I did say, unless the city has a strict ordinance on it. And that's why, and believe me, I believe Tiburon's has been challenged in court. I can't recall if Sausalito has or Belvedere, but...
So you understand my point, is that that's taking...
Absolutely.
A literal stretch here. So one of the points that I brought up at the original meeting was the actual property line of 10 Westward. And it is down at the toe of the slope. And in fact, that fence that they have there is more of a privacy screen in many ways. And if they put a fence down at the property line, they would not have, this contesting of view and so forth would be over with, in some ways, because the fence is where you're saying, oh, I don't see the... If they put the fence on the property line, no issue. They would have that view obstructed, period. And the fence is in fact a screen for them not to have to look at down at that neighbor's yard. It's clearly been an obnoxious yard for a long time. And I don't know that I'd want to look at it, so I'd put a fence there too. So their entire backyard can become an open view of that bay area if they put their fence on the property line, and they're entitled to do that. It's really making something out of a fence that can move at that property owner's decision and not your applicant's decision. And he could do that and say, I want my view. And he's up to, that's his right to ask for that. So, just a moment.
May I respond?
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, that the property line is down slope of where that fence is located, and the property owner is totally within his right, maybe he has to get a building permit, I don't know off the top of my head, to put the fence on the true and correct property line. But what you're tasked with is evaluating the view as it exists in this moment in time, not as it could exist in the future. And I mean, you guys actually gave that feedback to us, that part of the redesign consideration was, even though there's lots of great screening, and even though there were other elements that were appealing of the project, you said, we can't evaluate, and we had, at that time, again, full neighbor support, with the exception of 10. You said, we can't just approve a project because all the neighbors are on board with it. We are tasked with enforcing the code, quite frankly, and whether or not you take that as, you know, a public obligation, or, you know, serving the public benefit. Everyone has their own interpretation, but you have to interpret the code as it exists at the time. And when you're evaluating whether or not a view is significantly and adversely impacted, you need to look at the facts of that case, which is what Doug is asking you guys to do. Right now, that fence is not located on the property line. Right now, that fence is not see-through, and it's five and a half feet, and they actually have evidence that they prefer to protect privacy rather than views. And...
I don't know that, but that's a statement you're making.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I said myself that they would like to, I would think they want privacy, but they're clearly making a case that they would like their view. So you're making a statement there about the neighbor who's not here to stand and comment on that.
I'm just making observations based on the site conditions that I saw.
All right. Phyllis, did you have a question?
It was in relation to what you were saying.
Yeah.
We had a case, I think you may have been on the commission, I know the other members were not, with a backyard where they had built up a section of their yard to have a view of the bay, and the neighbor wanted to add a second story. We, as a matter of fact, the person who owned the house that had the patio actually was in the planning department of the county. Do you remember that? Or was that prior to you?
I don't recall that, so...
Okay, then it was prior to you. And we went and we all looked at it, we went back and forth on it. But one of the things that was significant in us making a decision was, is, was the patio oriented in a way that the view was the purpose of the patio? Or was it just something that if you stood in a certain space, you could see it? And I think that's something that's important, that we have to look at. Because if it's just, if the patio is set up in a way that they enjoy this beautiful view, and it's beautiful, but if that's not the way the patio is set up, but if you stand in one corner, it should make a difference as we look at how we observe what is done.
All right, so...
Wait, hang on a second. So are you...
I'm finished.
Okay, all right. So that said, I don't remember the case, and, I mean, a patio is there, you stand there, you look around, you swivel your head, regardless of how the chairs are, you look around, you see the view or you don't see it. It's kind of minutia here, so... Adam, you want to jump in?
I just wanted to remind the commission that I do believe the representative from representing 10 Westward, the person up slope is here, I believe, to speak, so...
Great. All right. So we'll get to that. I want to thoroughly see what I can get out of this gentleman. Charles, you had somebody else you wanted to say?
Well, I just want, so I'm not, my interpretation of where that patio is in relationship to the entire backyard of 10 Westward is that it is intentionally put in that corner and all roads lead to that patio. And there seems to be no other desirable feature in that corner or relationship to the house that would dictate that it's there besides the view. So that's, that's how I would interpret it.
Okay. Now, sir, if I might ask you to go to one of your other slides, the next slide of description of interpretation that you have. So, all right.
This is taken from page five of the staff report.
Yeah, so now, I want you to go to the next slide, I think it was, because that's, okay. Now, back up to slides, here you go. So, may wish to consider, I'm not sure where you can say that we cannot consider a balancing act of the single bedroom, or how do you arrive at the conclusion that we cannot ask you to remove further or do something else with the application?
With view consideration, the finding that you guys need to make is whether or not the view is significant and adverse. It's not whether or not a architectural element that is necessary or voluntary or elective contributes to it. It's not, you know, the color or the scheme of the house. It's only about the view. And that's why I say, it's not a balancing act. It's not a, does the benefits outweigh the burden? Because if that were the standard by which you measured anything, I can say that there would probably be next to no development, because everyone would be out here in arms saying, it's so burdensome, it's so burdensome, someone doesn't need X, Y, or Z.
Well, let me just say that we are tasked with deciding what it is. We have certain tools that we can do that. Call it a balancing act, call it architectural revisions, call it what you want. You can call it a balancing act. If we say, we want you to move this back, or we'd like to do that, maybe you can trade something off. There's many names to call.
Terminology is defined massing.
The terminology is different. So, you know, we have, we can talk about height of the building, we can talk about massing of the building, we can talk about the starting point of the building, how high does it get, from where? So there's only so many things that we, as a commission, can point to besides saying, take it down, or do this, or move it. And it's, call it a balancing act or something, whatever you want to call it. It's an alteration of design, so...
I agree that the commission has broad discretion in the design field and everything that you've said, but I don't agree that a balancing act is appropriate or frankly, the correct way to evaluate this. And staff has outlined in their recommendations how each of the findings can be made, except for finding three. And finding three is limited to whether or not the view is significant and adversely impacted. And that's why I've, in the very next sentence, staff even says, the commission is tasked with this. Is the blockage significant and adverse? It doesn't say, is it significant and adverse because there's a six-bedroom, or because there's a bathroom, or because of something else, because of the roof slope? Those are all things that you can talk about with height, bulk, and mass, and did we achieve the amount of change that you got us in before? But it's not within the context of the view where you apply that discretion. And I don't mean to challenge the commission in seeing how far you can exercise your discretion. So please excuse me if that's the way it's coming across, I can hear myself here. I just, I want to make sure that we are staying on task, no pun intended, with what staff has identified as the major issue and how it should be evaluated. Because it is ambiguous. It's difficult.
All right. Thank you for all of your responses and presenting as much response.
Can I make one comment?
Please, yes, very quick, yeah.
I'm Jim Treiman, the architect on the project. And I did want to clarify on, when we adjusted the upper floor, we did do significant reduction in the massing to accommodate the view. And ultimately, although we did look at a way to make that one bedroom into some sort of outdoor area that Chris alluded to, ultimately, after discussions with the owner, they wanted to have, you know, three kids' rooms and a master suite upstairs. And so we actually reduced the size of the room so that we could get those four bedrooms upstairs. So that's what he was requesting. So just to kind of clarify that.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Now that we've extended this significantly, there is someone here from 10 to speak. Is that correct? Yes. Please step up and state your name.
Thank you, Chair Chase. My name is Alicia Guerra. I'm a land use attorney with Buckholder, and I'm here on behalf of the owners, Tom and Jan Sherwood, the owners of 10 Westwood, who unfortunately were not able to be here this evening, so they asked me to present a few remarks on their behalf. You have a couple of letters from them as well. And this evening, I'd like to speak to three issues. One is the scope of the planning commission's discretion under your general plan with respect to the findings you make. And I think staff has done an excellent job articulating what those findings are with respect to the eight findings for design review. But keep in mind that this isn't just about one issue related to a view from a patio. It's actually about a question of conformance with the general plan, the zoning ordinance, the visual impacts, and then also the massing and scale. And so even if you can demonstrate that the project complies with the high-quality exterior features and the design, there's still other elements to this analysis that the planning commission must go through. And it's important, too, not only from just the general plan and zoning and your policy perspective, but as I read this planning commission staff report, staff has relied on a categorical exemption under SEQA. And that raises a whole different standard. It's not just a question of what the applicant's representative refers to as you're not allowed to have a balancing act. Actually, based on all of this discussion tonight, it tells me that there is a significant and adverse impact that needs to be mitigated. And we, my client, and the information in the staff report, and the information before you this evening, actually has demonstrated that we've made a fair argument of a potentially significant impact to views that needs to be mitigated. And it can be mitigated to a less-than-significant level, or you're stuck having to do an EIR. And I would hate that the town would have to do an environmental impact report on a house. But as you hear from this discussion and from some of the recommendations that have been previously made, there are ways to actually mitigate the impact. And the impact is not only based on conformity with the general plan and your own zoning ordinance actually encourages you to consider these issues and to actually address them in terms of focusing on the horizontal element, as Chair, or I'm sorry, as Commissioner Metcalf pointed out. That is one of the things in your zoning ordinance. Those are your rules. Those are the development standards you apply in, how you solve the view impact. So there's the view impact. There's a way to fix the view impact that gets addressed through SEQA, and it also gets addressed through your policies. And your zoning ordinance, specifically in your purpose of your design review requirements, says you must do that and that you shouldn't unnecessarily impact views. So my client has submitted considerable documentation. I don't see anything, frankly, in the general plan and zoning ordinance that treats one view different from another, whether it comes from the bathroom, or the bedroom, or from an interior space or an active-use area like a patio. And Chair Chase, as you pointed out, they have, they don't have a view otherwise, so they're just trying to preserve what they have. Because if they don't have a view, then there is no visual, I mean, there is a visual impact because they lost their view. And all my client has been trying to do is preserve as much of that view in a manner consistent with the general plan and zoning ordinance. And this view, and we appreciate the applicant's efforts to try to address the visual impact, unfortunately, there's still a substantial impact to views. It's a significant and adverse impact, because, yeah, it's better than the last time in September. Maybe there was a 75 or 80% loss of a view, but now there's 59% plus or minus, and depending on where, from what angle, from, you know, what you use as your point of reference. But they still lose the view. They lose a considerable portion of their view. And all they're asking is to try to offset that impact. And there might be actually a way to offset the impact. So potential mitigation measure that would get reflected through the analysis is to maybe focus the massing and the scale of the structure on the north wing and keep it at the single-floor level, consistent with your zoning ordinance and your general plan policies. It doesn't mean, you know, maintain the space, maintain the floor area necessarily. And we understand the applicant's objectives, we're trying to maximize bedrooms on the property, but at the end of the day, there isn't anything in here that says that it's okay to continue to maintain that height, that vertical element, when your zoning ordinance says a way of dealing with the design review issue is to focus on the horizontal element. And so that is one potential mitigation measure that could actually demonstrate that the impact has been mitigated, so it's not significant and adverse. Because I'll tell you, if it's a significant and adverse impact, which my client has now put forth an argument and shown you with pictures and the story poles and the analysis in the staff report, then that means that, as I said, the town would have to do an environmental impact report because there's a significant and unavoidable impact. So we'd like to work together to see if we could come up with a compromise here that would substantially lessen the impact. Because ordinarily, significance is measured as something greater than 10%, is kind of a general rule of them. Well, there's more than half of this view, a very limited view to begin with, so they're losing what they had, basically. And so we see that as a significant issue. If anyone has any questions...
Anything else you want to say before I ask the commissioners if they have a question for you?
No, thank you.
Okay. Charles, anything you would like to ask Alicia here?
Uh, no.
All right. Jennifer?
No, thank you.
All right. Dr. Bundy?
In, for staff, probably, in reference to SEQA, the single-family homes are exempt from SEQA, is that correct?
So in the resolution, the SEQA determination is, the exemption is pursuant to Section 15303, which is for a new single-family home. Sometimes you see 15301, which is if you're doing an addition or minor modification of the existing structure. Whether you view this as a new, new structure entirely, or in addition to an existing structure, that falls under that exemption.
Can, excuse me?
Yes.
May I clarify what the law says?
You can express your...
So it is true that there's a categorical exemption, 15301 or 15303, that allows for single-family residents to be exempt from SEQA review. However, because it's not a statutory exemption, so it's not an automatic thing, it's categorical, you still have to go through the analysis of whether there's been an exception to that exemption that applies. And in this case, we have an exception where... And in this case, we have an exception where there's actually significant impacts to views. And so it's not an automatic thing, and unfortunately, I mean, I represent developers who get stuck with this, you know, in other jurisdictions, where they end up having to do an EIR on a house because they lost the view of the mountains or something. And so, SEQA provides for the exception to the exemption. And we've made a fair argument in that regard.
We'll check in with our attorney here in a minute, but thank you for that clarification from your viewpoint. Bob, anything else for, okay, Phyllis?
Yes, I'd like to know where you got that 10% figure signifying significance, because if 10% is what signifies significance, we'll never have anything taken care of here. I haven't seen 10% anywhere.
Right. Well, you raise a good question. And so, as a general rule of thumb, when you don't have objective criteria specified, so when impacts to public views, or to views from public vantage points get considered, a general rule of thumb, or loss of vegetation, or impacts to biological resources, kind of a general rule of thumb among the industry is to use something on the order of 10%. But you have to take into consideration the context and the integrity of that particular issue. And so in this case, because this is really the only view, you lose the view. If you have, I mean, you lose such a substantial portion of it, it would be, it would meet a threshold of a greater impact for purposes of measuring the significance of that adverse impact. But you're right, there's no bright-line test that it has to always be 10%. It's used kind of as a rule of thumb in other communities. In some communities, actually, I'm dealing with a project in Las Gadas, just the fact that some trees are going to be removed, that is viewed as a significant visual impact. And in part, there have been cases that have actually given planning commissions and councils discretion to make those kind of findings where their general plan contemplates that they get to make the decision on what's important as a policy matter. And that's what your general plan does. And that's why you don't have a prescriptive set of rules in your general plan, perhaps it gives you as decision-makers, and the courts have upheld that, as a way of sort of finding whether or not something is significant.
I find 10% being a ridiculous figure, I'm sorry to say. I remember seeing somewhere, whether it was the general plan or in the ordinances, when we talked about views, we talked about which, that, how you determine what was a significant view, and from where a view would be significant. And I don't remember where it was, it goes back before your time. And as I say, you cannot balance the view, let's say, from a living room with the view from a bathroom window. There is no comparison. And I think it's important that we talk about significance of the view without talking about low percentages or anything else like that. It's how it's going to affect the comfort and, you know, the living pleasure of the neighbor, rather than worry about this percentage and that percentage, or whether or not, I don't know if we're being reminded of or threatened of having to have an EIR.
Well, I'm going to ask Judith this question. So there was this statutory discussion, or point brought forth from Alicia. How would you respond to this issue, Judith, or can you, or wish you, will you?
That's an interesting question. Certainly, as you are all familiar with SEQA, is there has to be, in this case, there's an exemption that staff is in the resolution. And what it appears is that the owners of TEN Westwood are trying to raise this to be outside of the SEQA exemption. They use the term fair argument, and raise the issue of a potential challenge that you'd have to do an EIR, or focused EIR on just this issue of view. And again, certainly not going to give a legal opinion that may be privileged and confidential to you or the council from the staff table tonight, but certainly, I think that it's something to take into consideration. But there is a distinction between a SEQA evaluation and our general plan policy, that while it uses terminology like significant and adverse, which are typically SEQA terminology, it certainly was not designed or drafted to trigger the environmental analysis at the time of adoption. I can understand why that is, that terminology is being used tonight, but that's certainly something that you could take into effect. But you can also, as you interpret your general plan, it's your determination, as outlined in the staff report, as to what is significant. Just because it's significant for a design review doesn't make it significant under SEQA analysis.
Thank you, Judith. I think what I'd like to do at this point is to, one, I'm going to see if there's any public comment, and then I'm going to give the applicant a three-minute chance to respond, and then Alicia, you, a three-minute chance to rebut anything, okay?
Sure.
So that's what we'll do. We're still in the public hearing, so is there anybody here that would like to comment on this application? All right. Seeing none, then, would the applicant like to step up? And I'm going to put you on a timer for three minutes, just to rebut or respond to anything that we've asked, or that the TEN Westwood's representative has brought up.
I won't belabor the point. We previously looked at numbers, and we looked at a lot of different ways to evaluate the project. And so, I didn't come this evening to spout whether it's 10%, 59%, 50%, 75%. You guys are ultimately the ones that have to evaluate whether or not this is significant and adverse. And I just would like to remind you of the use of the area and how it is oriented and how it is used. And it's not based on the words of how it's used, it's based on what the pictures that have been provided to you by staff and by the applicant demonstrate how it is used, that it's used as a raised patio with an intimate fire pit with two chairs to share a special moment privately, shielded by a solid wood fence. And so, with that as the backdrop, when I look at the story polls in this photo, I struggle to understand how this is deemed significant and adverse. And I do understand that there is a view impact, and I can see, especially in that corner there, but we looked at a variety of alternative layouts, and what you have to do to avoid that impact is almost entirely eliminate the second story. So if that's the criteria that future applications are going to be measured by, I think that's something that's prescribed under the code as a development standard. You have to stay within the building envelope, or some reasonable deviation thereof. And I think that we've worked really closely with staff, with the neighbors, and hopefully in response to your comments from September, in demonstrating how drastically we have modified the plans. As I said earlier, it's not a nip and tuck, it was a overhaul. The rendering, I think, supports that. The story polls most certainly demonstrate that. And I really encourage you guys to heed staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution that was provided to you and approve the project as presented this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alicia?
Thank you, Chair Chase and members of the commission. Two comments I'd like to add. I understand the town attorney's comments regarding design review findings not necessarily being the same thing from a SEQA standpoint. And again, I'm not advocating for an EIR, but what I am saying is, we've presented substantial evidence to demonstrate that there is a significant and adverse impact with this design. It's by all means better than it was in September, but there still is a significant impact. And the reason it's significant is because it's impacting the only place from which you have a view of the bay. And your general plan recognizes the importance of that view. And so we believe that that gets considered both in terms of the design review findings, it gets considered in terms of consistency with the general plan policies and the zoning ordinance, and it gets considered as part of this question of are there impacts to views? And perhaps because of the mass and the scale of the building of the project, and we understand the applicant's objectives here, but maybe if the building, the development envelope were smaller, and maybe if it were oriented in a different way, it actually would lessen the impact. And that's all we're saying, that there still is a significant and adverse impact that needs to be addressed, one way or the other. And it's within your discretion to do that, both as a SEQA matter and as a design review matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. All right. I'm told that Phyllis would like to ask the architect a question.
Yes.
I think we could do that under this format, but let's keep it.
Looking at this, and this is off the top of my head, if the upper floor was flipped over, leaving the staircase where it is, if the layout was flipped, it would be moving it more to the right, in this case, my right, and inward more from TEN Westwood. Is that a possibility? Because the staircase, I'm assuming is where the window is?
Correct.
All right. So if you just put the master suite to the right of the staircase, and the other bedrooms towards the left, you'd be moving it over a way, as I say, this is off the top of my head, I'm not sitting here measuring it or anything like that, but is that a possibility that would help?
It's a possibility, but I believe it would actually make more of an impact on the view, because then this story pole here gets moved, or pulling it farther over.
Okay.
And also, a clear vision on the story poles. So they're supporting the eve line, so they're actually two feet in, I think Chris...
Sorry, excuse me, can you use the microphone? You can actually pull it out if you want to bring it over to the screen.
So the story polls are actually supporting the line of the eve, and there's a two-foot overhang, so the story pole you see is not the line of the wall. And I don't know how else you can do story polls without doing that. So you have to kind of visualize that that story pole is actually going to be in two feet. The wall will be in two feet from the story pole, yet the eve line is up where the flags are.
And the fact that it was further away wouldn't be less obnoxious to... Okay, I just thought it was a possibility that might work.
Thank you. I'm going to say, then, that we will close the public hearing, because I don't see there's anybody else that wants to stand up and make a public comment. Is that correct? I'm looking out at the audience, no further public comment. So I'm going to bring it back up here to the commission. So we're going to go down the line here, and I don't know where each of you stand, so, you know, when we talk about modifying a project, as I was saying earlier, we have certain things that we can get very specific about, or we can accept the project as it is. And we have the options before us tonight, as laid out by the staff, of either denying the application, asking for changes, or approving the application with a motion to approve the resolution as prepared for us. We can always ask the applicant to come back to a date certain or a date uncertain, if we so chose in this case. So when we're talking about elements that we have at our discretion, we can talk about the bulk of this project. I'm just sort of saying these things as general reminders here for us to consider. I'm not trying to steer anything, I'm just trying to say that we have the bulk of it, we have the height of it, we have the individual heights of the floors. In the first meeting, I asked if they were willing to drop the garage elevation, or drop the building, and the applicant at that time said they would not. And as you look at that view, you know, if you had that bedroom down significantly, it wouldn't impact the view, but it would be a five, six-foot reduction. Both floors are a little over normal. The upper floor is a nine-foot ceiling height, the predominance of the lower floor is a 10-foot ceiling height. The living room that hangs over is 11-foot, but that doesn't impact the view. We talked previously about the bulk of the project, just the FAR, and that they were at a high level before, right below the allowable FAR. They've reduced it by 200 square feet. I think it makes it something like, what they said, 39% is their current FAR, I think?
37.3%.
37.3, yeah. So they're 37.3 versus 40. And as we've always said, and it's acknowledged in the staff report, that the FAR is a guideline, it is not an allowance. The structure height does not appear to get near the maximum, and the other setbacks are within appropriate distance. So, you know, I have heard questions from each of you, but if you have a discussion point that you want to put out, I'm going to start down with you, Charles, and I'm going to say to you that I'd like you to throw out discussion points unless you have a certainty about where you stand. But if you want the other commissioners to hear a viewpoint, then please state that and say what you'd like us to hear. You are considering or would like to hear our viewpoints on it, so...
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. I would like to share my viewpoint, because in interpreting this and understanding it and all the parties involved, it is quite an evaluation we have to make, right? I think, in general, the team, the applicant, has listened to many of, at least my personal comments that I made last time. I think they were great improvements that make it very acceptable, right? And it really does come down to finding number three, right? And so my interpretation of what significant is, and why I think all these policies and all the rules for land in the end is, is for the landowner, which is a resident that lives next door. So I put myself in his shoes, or imagine I own the property, and would I consider that a significant view loss? If I was going to buy that property, if it had a, if the real estate agent walked me over to that patio and said, "Look, if there's an ocean view," you know, like, would I consider that really an ocean view? Does that add value to the property? Is that something that's tangible to that owner? And it is. It is, and I know that you took more of the mass back. I do see from that one point, it's 50%. So I struggle with making that finding. You know, that's why I asked, is there ways where you can still maximize your square footage, get all your rooms, you know? Because overall, the public really seems to want to embrace a new home there. You know, I haven't heard any objections to the scale, that's within your rights. So I'd like to see that, I just, at what cost, right? And to me, I would not want to sacrifice that view to allow that to happen if I was your next-door neighbor, and that's how I have to evaluate it. So that's how I see it, and that's how I would like to express to the commission how I see it, and I will leave it at that. But I also wanted to say thank you for really listening, and, you know, I would just, in general, the interpretation, I don't find valuable. I think it makes my job harder. I think if there, you know, if you want to just also make your own reports and say findings, but your evaluation of them, it only complicates things for me, and I don't know that it's been helpful for you... that it's been helpful for, for, for the process, but that doesn't matter.
Good. Thank you for being succinct there. Jennifer.
Thanks. I think one of the things I'm struggling with here is, based on how, I think there's one issue for discussion, it's, you know, obviously we're talking about the view, how sign, I, and I do want to start out by saying thank you to the applicant, because I do think that you guys have made some very considerable changes that have vastly improved the project, and I appreciate that very much. I think one of the things I'm struggling with, and I will put it up here for discussion, is, you know, their current use or enjoyment of the view versus some potential use or enjoyment of the view. To Peter's point, you know, if you were to move the fence or elevate the, or reorient the, the deck that they currently have as the neighbor, I think the loss of view is probably 40, 50% from what I can tell. And while I do think that is significant, I'm struggling a little bit to navigate, you know, one of the questions that we asked the applicant was, could this bedroom, this third, I'll call it the third bedroom that's on the northwest corner, could that be reduced? I think that would be the only way in which you would pull that, that corner, that wall back, to be less of an impact. But I guess I'll put that out there, that was not as succinct as it probably could have been. But I do think that they have made some considerable changes that have lessened, greatly lessened the impact on the neighbor, so.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. Phyllis, would you please turn in?
I think the only way that more of the view could be saved is the way you've already said you would not do, but maybe you would reconsider, and that would be lowering the height of the floors. You've got, what, 11-foot downstairs, 10, or 10-foot downstairs, 9-foot upstairs? Have a lower ceiling. Lower the total height, and that would give some more of a view. I don't know what percentage, I'm not going to try and guess, but I think it would give more of a view to the neighbor. And I just don't know whether or not the applicant would consider lowering the ceilings.
Okay. Is that all right? Doctor.
I think that the building in its current revision really looks great, and I can see why all of the, the other neighbors like it. The view of it, looking from the west, looking at it from the north, setbacks, everything looks really good. And I would be perfectly happy and willing to approve it if I didn't feel that there is a significant blockage on the view from the neighbor. And I think that has to be addressed. I know there's going to end up being some impact, and we'd like to see it get down to less than significant.
Thank you. I think that we have these elements in front of us about the view, and I think the view is significant in its impact, and to everybody's agreement, I think that the view can have an impact, but not this significant an impact. And I think that you're at 44, 141 square feet, while, you know, that is 37% of it of the FAR, you know, it's a significant building for the area. So in the, in the abilities to utilize perhaps a square footage reduction, perhaps a, a reduction in the building elevations, I think that the goal that we would state, and we'll go back to the commissioners and talk to them, would be to reduce this impact of view. How you get there is a selection of your tools, so to speak. You know, I think that this 50% loss is too significant. So you do have the option of extending the ground floor out, you do have the option of removing a corner of the building and coming up with a design that does that, you have the option of dropping the whole building down, and you have the option of lowering the, the ceilings and the different floors. And there is a potential redesign beyond that, that I wouldn't endeavor to describe as we're not the design team or the architect. But, you know, I do commend you for having made an effort. I think that it just sort of jumbled it around somewhat, so that there's still this impact. It's not as significant, but it is detrimental. And I think that this view is the one thing that this property at 10 has, and they're going to be looking at a blank wall from their other rooms. So maintaining this is important, I believe, so. And it's a recitation of some of the tools, and then I'll go back to everybody and see how each of you feel might be the right steps, and what you would like to see as our action. Charles.
So as a talking point, I really appreciate the architect answering my question earlier about possible solutions that we could discuss, that you were happy with, that you maybe have already explored, right? And so one of those was the loggia concept, right? And that's not an option that you brought forward, but I think we should talk about what the implications mean for that, if that's a solution that maybe the client and, you know, applicant are, are willing to entertain to do that. If there's, say, a column and some kind of, you know, screen, but overall, the view is still maintained through that transparency, but it's still usable space, does that maintain the view corridor? And I think that's something I'd like to discuss, because I'm comfortable with it. And I think that if they came forward with that, I would probably accept it, because I think loggias are beautiful, I think they're exciting architectural elements from, you know, Italian Renaissance, and, you know, everybody wishes they have a loggia off their bedroom, you know? So, but I guess I just pose that to everybody so that they have more clear direction. If we can't make the findings for the view, and we don't want to design something that they're, you know, they've already proposed one, so how are we comfortable with that? Can we say as a, as a group that, yeah, we think that that would be an acceptable solution, and, and let them go back with, with an, with some kind of a surety that if they make moves like that, that story pole is transparent through there, and that, that we would accept that and move forward? The only other issue I have with that is that I would, I would want the, the neighbor to also be aware of that design change and feel comfortable with that. So if it's through their attorney or whatever, I, I think that that's, it's a nice kind of concession, where it's, it's, to me, a balancing act of win-win, so.
Okay. That's a good point. And I'm going to, without getting into discussion, I think where we're headed with is a set of possibilities that includes that as an option. And that in spite of the email from Mr. Sherwood saying that he did not want to meet, he feels like he's been burned, I think we would, and I certainly have asked, that the people in the town, when you get to this point, find a way to sit down and talk to each other. And in some cases, we've gotten to this point where there's an appeal, and people have sat down, and it's vanished, when there's real communication. And I think here's an opportunity, at this point, for everyone to sit down, come together with something that is a trade-off or an example, and it would include that. And I'm not going to get into the possibilities of a loggia out there, covered or not, with this, the applicant or with the Tenwood Westwood rep. I, I, that's not our job to navigate that. That would be the individual's job to do that, the applicant and the neighbor, to, to figure out which of these things is possible. So the Sherwoods have a valid point, and I don't think that they can tie this up interminably. And with that said, I think that there has to be good-faith negotiation where the people actually sit down and talk to each other despite some of the language in the emails. So with that said, I would take it back to you, Jennifer, and see where you stand with those issues.
So you're asking if I'm supportive of suggesting that the applicant go back to the neighbor and.
There's that, there's the issue of creating that dialogue, there's the possibility of saying, you would either approve it as it is, you want to see them get to a more acceptable level of impact than this 50%, and whether, you know, you delay this, continue this to another date, or deny it.
Okay. I think it would be nice to maybe have them take one more pass at working with the neighbor to see if that corner can be reduced in some way or reoriented. But generally speaking, I'm supportive of the project, and, but I think if we had to take a vote tonight, I think I would be in the minority, so I'm not going to suggest that. But I, I think we've been fairly consistent in thinking about views as they currently exist versus, you know, what are all the views that could exist? So I think it would be consistent to say that the neighbor is not currently taking advantage of this view maybe in its maximum capacity, so I find the impact to be less significant.
Well, if you're going to make that statement, we're going to vote on a resolution, or a motion that has some language in it that it's significant, or it needs to be reduced in its significance, so I'm, you think about that, and.
Okay.
We're going to have to come back to you, and you have to decide if it's significance enough to, is great enough to ask them to go back to the drawing board or not.
Okay.
Phyllis.
Well, I certainly do not want to give them a percentage of what will be significant or not significant.
Right.
I would like to see them go back and look at ways they can reduce the impact. I think it was, I don't know if it was the architect or the attorney who said something about you wanted the three bedrooms plus the master suite on the second floor? Well, you can't do that with the loggia, so it should be kept in mind. I think it's important to look at it. In reading through this change of emails, I noticed where's, we're now talking about, I was looking for the, 4,100 and something square feet?
Forty-four hundred, forty-one square feet.
Forty-four, is it? All right. And here they're talking about, in one of the emails, "Please review the attached design. The overall size of the project has been reduced, the living area is now 3,993 square feet." I think it would be nice to find out exactly what size it is.
Well, they're talking about living area, that doesn't include the garage.
The garage, is that the thing, the difference?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to be sure that we're all dealing with the same square footage.
That's living area is defined differently, so.
Okay. But I just think it's important that they look for a way, whether it's, as I say, lowering the ceilings, or moving something over or whatever, to try to find a way to do it. But I am, I don't think we should be giving any exact amount of view that must be saved, any percentage.
All right. Dr. Bundy.
I think you're really close as far as the design and the house and the way it looks, and I would like to see you come back with a revision where there's less than significant impact on the view.
All right. So what we're going to ask you to do then is to come back with that as a less than significant view. We're going to ask that you present the evidence with Mr. Bush in hand, to sit down with both parties, Ten Sherwood if at all possible, and come back to us with an agreement about the reduction of this impact of view. I, again, think that the tools for doing that include reducing the FAR, they include reducing the height of the building, and a reorganization of the floor plan. I think that it's a handsome building besides that, but you have to, we, we need some, someplace to reduce this impact. So with that said, I would turn to Adam and ask him about January 9th or January 23rd as possible dates for moving this to.
You know, I think the January 9th is going to be a difficult date to make. Obviously, if the applicant decides that they do want to proceed and take another pass at this, it would be up to them when, to a certain extent, when they could come back. I would expect they would be moved quickly, as quickly as possible, to come back and get to the January 23rd date. There's also the opportunity, perhaps, that we maybe hear from them this evening, that they would rather you vote this evening, I don't know. Maybe that's what they're discussing at the moment. But I would say the 23rd is probably the best shot, although, again, it would be up to the applicant to have done, you know, feel that they are in a position to come back and respond to the Commission with a different vote.
Okay. So if, if we are to make a motion, we would simply, yeah, yeah, before we get there, if we were to make a motion, if it's simply to continue it to a date certain based upon this idea of reduction of impact, is that adequate enough to put into the record based on the notes and so forth?
Yes. You know, I think this is similar to where we were at the last meeting, where the applicant heard sort of the consensus opinion from the Commission, and had a variety of different tools, so to speak, that you've, the Commission has laid out, and to try to get there without being, designing it from, from the day, so.
Okay.
I think the motion to continue in inviting the applicant to come back with some revisions, and as, as well as you recommended also to try again to engage with the neighbor, maybe you want to also include the neighbor in that, hopefully, hoping that they would engage. And, and then that would be satisfactory for moving on.
All right. So applicant, your options are, I think, spelled out for you, whether you want us to vote up or down, or whether you want to continue to a date certain or a date uncertain.
Before making that decision, I need to beg for some clarity, because it indirectly dictates what the decision is. As you've probably heard many times from many applicants, this is a very expensive process. Story poles, certifications, architectural fees, other consultants that go into this process. And it's compounded by the fact that when it's designed by committee, by neighbors, or one neighbor in this case, with completely uncertain expectations, even though we obviously reached out in advance of finalizing drawings and doing all of those expenses, that it's challenging. And so one of the elements that we've heard loud and clear is that a majority of you believe that this is a significant impact, and that's based on a 50% give or take something estimate. We need to understand how that 50% is evaluated, because we are going to go back and we are going to try to address how we can reduce that. And I'm, I'm talking somewhat objective, quantifiable. So can you please help clarify how you are quantifying this view so that when we come back and we try to replicate the same angles and everything like that, that we are objectively meeting your expectations? And I'm not saying it's got to be 35%, it's got to be 20%. I'm trying, I, I want to know what is the basis for the percent, just like FAR is a percentage, it's floor area compared to the overall lot. This view is actually this wide, this is what a camera picks up. And so I'm trying to figure out, what is the 50%, and I'm sorry for using that terminology, it was identified in the staff court, what is the percentage that you are looking at so that we can use apples to apples? And maybe, and just if I can. Yeah. Tag on, I mean, we've had conversations in the past about views and where the views are taken from, or where the, the images in which the Commission is evaluating. So I think at the very least, it would be good to know from, are there several images? Are there particular images from Doug's presentation that, in which the evaluation is, is sort of being made? And that may be helpful in that regard. Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, this is clearly not the image that you guys are basing the view up.
I mean, this is clearly not the image that you guys are basing the view obstruction. So I could, I could eliminate that, but.
Go back to, maybe to our staff presentation, you know, I think, I'm not sure, but it's up, you know, I think that is, that is a reasonable.
It's reasonable to understand what we would say yes to and what we would say no to.
Well, just in terms of what the images that is being used to evaluate this, I think that is, that is more important.
So Doug, this is the applicant's image, right, or is this yours?
This is, this is ours. And to that point, I mean, we've had trouble getting access to the neighbor's property, and rightfully so. I wouldn't want, you know, the neighbor who's trying to design a house coming onto my property, but, and you guys can't condition him to allow us on his property, so we're at a little bit of a rub here, and before we go down the rabbit hole, we just want to make sure we understand what we're looking at.
I understand. So we'll have to poll everybody up here to come up with it, but I'd like Alicia to make sure she's clear on this when she goes back. And I got to say that this is about neighborhood discussion. We can't do this in a vacuum, and it's got to be done. You know, they got to sit down at the table and do that. And they may disagree with our interpretation of it, so I'm going to go to the other commissioners and we're going to look at these, and I'm going to say, what would you see as an acceptable level of restoration?
I just want to clarify what I was saying. I was just trying to say what would be reasonable would be the images in which you are using. So is this an image we want, that the commission is using to evaluate?
It is, this is one provided by the city.
By the staff, yes.
Yes, we want the staff image.
And if you want to go first. No, that's fine, but I just, I think at the very, as a baseline, sorry. As a baseline, that would be helpful for the, for the next time coming back to be looking at the same view.
And Doug took more than one photo, we should be sure. This is the photo we want to follow.
There's a few, yeah.
Yeah, well, there's.
Yeah, there's more than one photo, so we should decide which photo we're looking at.
No, no, yeah, so there, you got this one, and you got the next one, that one.
That's closer.
So, you know, that's, right now, that takes 50 percent out.
Doug, could you back it up? So we have the wide angle to see where these were taken from, just.
Yep, there's that one, sorry.
So the photo that we're looking at for using the objective standard, what I saw, you can see these wind chimes or decorative element, so you're more or less standing in front of this table at the, as the basis for the view, is that right?
All right, Doug.
Yeah, that's the general location, near, near the edge of that overhang there.
Right, so then when you walk toward the fence, scroll toward the fence, so then you're there, and you're what, 30 feet away from the fence, something like that?
Maybe 15, 20 feet.
15 feet, okay. All right, so you're, you're within, right, okay. So you're standing at the lower yard when you're, go back one, or forward one more. This one, yeah, so here, you're standing at the yard, you get the view blocked, and you're standing in the backyard and not on the deck, and it's a loss. So, and the story pole that represents the master bedroom is in the middle of that water view. And that's, and that's, but that's an eve, not the building, so the building would move back a couple of feet from there. Oh, look at that, he's got a cursor, so, you know.
We're getting fancy.
That would be the, the eve, not the building line, and then the, the lower flags are the sixth bedroom over there on the corner. So, yeah, that said, and so we can't be so specific, but Charles, how would you?
So is this the, I'm sorry, is this the?
This is not the one that we're going to be evaluating, right?
Okay, yeah, but go to.
Is this the photo?
I was about to say.
There are a couple of photos, which is the one we're going to be evaluating, Peter?
It's this one and the one after it, but go to the next one, Doug, this one right there.
Okay, that's the one?
Yeah.
So if you, if you want a no-brainer, you just preserve the view. I mean, like, I have to say that, you know, if you, if you guys just want it approved tomorrow, make sure that that view from that angle is preserved and it's approved, right? That's basically where we're at. So if you want to get into a gray zone of percentages, I interpreted the drawings, and this is interpretation that we're getting into, it's like two-thirds to half, and it was like less than significant to me as like one-third, 20 percent, right? Like, it's some kind of, like basically where the fireplace, you know, because, because that's already up there and starting to block the view, right? I mean, that, that's how I understand it, and that would give, you know, that would half that, and I think then that's pretty, that's pretty, that's pretty convincingly less than significant to anybody in a group or a committee or however we're evaluating it, right? So that would be my two cents.
The problem would be that the ten westward might not see it that way, but.
Right, at some point, though, we're not just representing his interests, we're representing an evaluation of the entire group of people.
And this project, right, great, okay. Jennifer.
I can support Charles's point of view that something sort of up from the chimney to the right, so like basically a 50 percent reduction of what it is now, if that makes sense, does that make sense?
Just to clarify, here's the pole, even though it's two feet beyond where it should be, and here's the chimney, and I agree, the chimney is a current existing obstruction, and it's, this is kind of that gray zone.
Yeah.
If you want the no-brainer, stay in border of the chimney, gray zone, and if you really want to come back and get denied, just push it way out there and, and.
But then again, I can't, I can't comment for wait.
Wait, 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 come on, let's, let's not get into this, so, you're, you're clear on what we're talking about there?
I, I think I am now.
Okay.
One last point of clarification for Doug, just so that we can understand, because there isn't a fixed object in the foreground here, whereas in the other photo, there was the wind chime, you could see the arbor slightly, so I knew in that one that we were right at the edge of the arbor. I mean, you can see, you can line yourself up with the arbor here. So the photo that's a little bit closer in, zoomed in a little bit, where were you standing? I guess I could count back from this board, one, two, three, four, five, you're at about the fifth board.
I had a pointer, you would be reducing.
I think this is about.
Doug, go to the other side.
Standing right next to the chair, as long as he hasn't moved the chair.
So, you know, it, it means that if the, somewhere around half of that sixth bedroom, from the master bedroom corner out, if, if half of that were preserved roughly, that would be it. So, Phyllis, your statement about what's, what you might like to see, what you would like to see.
At this point, it is the left hand, left side of the chimney.
Okay.
From there onward, so it's probably taking the part that will be blocked and dividing it in half.
Got it.
If that's about as close as I can figure it.
All right, Dr. Bundy.
Yes, I would consider insignificant 10 or 15 percent as far as a blockage, and that would be paired off against a much better looking building so that you're not looking at this rundown building right now.
Right, okay, so, and I would stand for a halfway point between the master bedroom pole and the pole of the sixth bedroom, so, you know, it's about a, call it 40 to 60 percent reduction of that space, call it whatever you want to.
You just, I'm sorry, you referenced the master bedroom pole and the, this bedroom pole?
Yes, right.
Somewhere right in between here, around the area of the chimney?
Of the chimney, that's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry, earlier I heard the chimney and the pole as a reference.
We're not trying to be that exact, so we're not, you know, I'm, I can see that the, the master bedroom pole is there, and if you got halfway over from the outer pole of the bedroom, the sixth bedroom, then, you know, it would be a significant increase. So I, I, I just, it's a restoration that would turn this into less than significant. And I don't know how architecturally it might evolve, I do not know. You have a number of options to you, you can present the loggia idea to the neighbor and see how they feel about it. This has to be where you guys agree on something. We know where we stand, and we're not going to complete, you know, abridge the rights of eight, or six westward to build this place and have an impact, some impacts are going to happen. So we know that, it's just that this is a loss and can be done. I think we'll leave it, the challenge of how to get there up to you guys with any one of those tools.
So then, is he, now, the applicant needs to make a decision about how.
Just go ahead and.
Yeah, hang on a sec, Tom, Adam.
I think you guys have been very clear, you're welcome to make a, to move on and make a motion.
So.
How do you want it worded?
I think we went over that.
Yeah.
It's a, to continue.
Continue to.
January 23rd.
Yeah, so do we have a?
He hasn't told the shit.
I know. I want to start a motion, though, so do I have a motion to continue it?
Did you want to say 9th or 23rd?
Yeah, 23rd.
Okay, I, you're right, I will do that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment about this at this point, since we've gotten the applicant back up there, so, at least to respond? Nope, okay, so do you guys have a decision about a continuance or not?
Yeah, I, I think, even though we don't have all the necessary survey data and things of that nature, we believe in continuing to work with our neighbors. We've tried over the past couple of months, we'll continue to endeavor, and hopefully we can come to a resolution. We'd like to be, continue to a date certain, January 23rd, or the second meeting in January.
Great, all right, and before we get a motion out of it, you know, because I believe so strongly in this, even though I would be glad to be a part of a meeting with Doug too and sit down and at least be, stand for cooperation and an understanding, so I'd be glad to be a part of it with the planning director, anybody else, you know, just to be there and say, come on, we got to get to a good place, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for a continuance based on this?
I move we continue to January 23rd.
I second.
Okay, so we're moving to continue this application, PL 20170045, based on a reduction of significance, of the impact of the view to a date certain of January 23rd.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Friedman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe?
Aye.
Chairman Chase.
Aye, thank you. All right, take a five-minute break here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to pick up where we left off, which was to go into the next item on the agenda. Let you. We have two business items tonight, accessory dwelling unit discussion and a 2009 general plan housing policies discussion. So the first item is a review and discussion of accessory dwelling unit regulations, including potential zoning ordinance amendments. So Mr. Bush, you've been working on this, and this is yours to get into, this is some history here, but I'll let you illuminate us on what we're looking at here and why we're looking at it.
Good deal, so here we are again, talking about accessory dwelling units, and for good reason. We went through a pretty comprehensive process at the end of 2016 in anticipation of changes that came down from the state, and we're here again to look at the existing state of the ordinance and, you know, in implementing it over the last year, finding opportunities for, for clarity, for better, you know, for creating some definitions where there aren't any, and just looking for ways to improve implementation. And so one of the ways, I think it makes sense to begin that discussion is by rehashing a little bit of why, you know, why we're going through this and why accessory dwelling units are really such a hot topic in Cora Madera and beyond. I think if we go here, I just provided a quick slide, and as, as discussed in the staff report, kind of the process, you know, obviously starting with the planning commission in October of 2016, and moving to the town council, and then actually came back on May 2nd of this year to kind of provide a report on the implementation. That was requested by the town council when they made a motion to adopt the ordinances, and so we came back, and actually, do we already, I don't think I did, we have a couple additional materials for you, and they're also included on the back table. We have one letter that was submitted from Lilliput Homes, and the minutes from the May 2nd report to the town council, to kind of supplement, was, was already in the staff And really, we're coming back to some of those points that were discussed in May in front of the town council, and that have been outlined in the staff report. So just, as I mentioned, starting kind of from the policy origins of this and why, why this is an important thing for the town to, to focus on and to be so, you know, get into the details of. In the housing element, it's very clear that second, second units, accessory dwelling units, however you prefer to call them, are an important source of housing in Cora Madera and California, as much of the town is, is built out, and much of it is single-family zoned. Opportunities for new housing, this is one of the major opportunities to create new housing, and not just more housing, but also affordable housing. So as you can see from the housing element, there's both policies for, you know, encouraging well-designed legal second units in all residential neighborhoods, as well as trying to adopt standards that, you know, further this goal. Also some discussion about ways to encourage or facilitate the creation of these units, whether it's through reduction of fees, waivers, having a period of time where you could have people come forward if they have, you know, illegally created second units, maybe units that have existed for many decades but were never, went through the proper process, kind of having a process for taking, taking those in and legalizing those, an amnesty program. Moving on, looking at the purpose, just as defined in our own municipal code in chapter 18.31, it's to be consistent with California government code section, you know, as you see there, and to increase the supply of small and affordable housing while ensuring that they remain compatible with the existing neighborhood. So some of the things that we wanted to discuss tonight have to do with compatibility, but also looking at ways to increase the number of these units where, wherever appropriate. And then just moving on, kind of going back to the state, these are some of the findings that you might find interesting, or the, sort of the whereas's from the state in their development of the new and updated second provisions. And there's many things here that I think, you know, the town and the state both take in this position that accessory dwelling units are a valuable form of housing, they provide housing for, whether it's for family members, for, you know, people aging, aging in place, home healthcare providers, you know, all, all different things, or as rental units, and, and also acknowledging that, you know, homeowners who create these units benefit by, by having, you know, supplemental additional income. And so I just provided this to kind of provide that even broader context beyond our own housing element policy and those in the general, in the general plan and zoning ordinance. And then also here, shown B, it's the intent of legislature that an accessory dwelling unit ordinance adopted by a local agency has the effect of providing, you know, I'll try to summarize this in a way, but that those standards and the processes that the town puts in place are not so, you know, excessive or burdensome, so as to reasonably restrict the ability of homeowners to create these units. And so that's one of the things we're looking at tonight, is how to, how to facilitate these, and in some ways, you know, how to get out of the way, but at the same time, how to make sure that these are done in the best way possible, in the, in the right way for the neighborhood, in the right way for the, the owners of these units, and for the potential occupants as well. So just a quick, quick rundown, we've had seven, I believe, seven accessory dwelling units approved in 2017. We have not received any applications for junior second units. I have to speculate. I have to speculate as to why that might be. I think partly it's because it's kind of a new form, it's kind of a new concept and there may be kind of opportunities there to expand education for for the public as to what those are and that they're even an option. But at this time, we haven't seen much, I don't know, much interest, but we haven't received any applications for them. And then the other thing to highlight here is just that they come in a number of different forms, whether you're creating a new detached structure that's completely independent or you're creating, you're you're kind of reimagining or reusing existing space within a structure. Or as is the case with a couple of these, taking something like a existing crawl space, excavating, not expanding the footprint of the home at all, but creating new living area within the structure. So these ADUs that were approved this year kind of represent a wide gamut of those different forms.
I think it's it's also fair to say we've had a number of other conversations with other people who are considering accessory dwelling units. So I think at least our experience is that while junior accessory dwelling units may not be sort of on the top of people's minds at the moment, definitely I think there has been enough discussion and conversation out there about new state law and sort of the ease of regulations related to accessory dwelling units that has, I think, made these types of units more popular and many people I think have approached us who haven't in the past. And part of that, I think, is parking related as well, that was a significant change. But in any case, a lot more activity, we would say, in 2017.
Indeed.
So here's just a quick sort of outline of what's in the staff report as far as things that may be changed to improve the ordinance, whether for, you know, clarification or to kind of further the intent of the and the purpose of the of the ordinance. So first of all, one of those is unit size. With those examples that we showed in the last slide, they really range from roughly anywhere from 500 square feet to one that was approved that was 1,200 square feet. Kind of looking at unit size for a couple reasons. One of those being originally kind of trying to adopt an ordinance consistent with the state before the state had really issued guidance on what the new laws meant. So trying to find clarity kind of at that time, and now we have more of that in part due to the HCD memo that was attached to the staff report, which one of those things that was kind of under question at the time of adoption was whether the town could restrict the size of units. At that time, it didn't seem as though the town could. So with this additional clarification, we now know that it was not necessary to change it from what was once 750 square feet to what is now 1,200 square feet. And so part of the reason that's being reconsidered is at the time of adoption, that was kind of a something that was kind of a significant question, I think definitely raised by the town council and somewhat by the planning commission, I believe, as well. So the other the other aspect of it is looking at the intent of the and the purpose of, you know, accessory dwelling units and looking at affordable housing as one of those kind of goals, creating affordable housing. And so it's kind of a question of whether, you know, larger unit sizes would would maybe not lend themselves to being an affordable unit. You know, it's sort of an open an open question, but that's that's part of the reason for this discussion is to kind of go into that a little deeper and see what what changes to this ordinance could help further that intent.
Yeah, and I and just to elaborate on that a little bit, I mean, we did go back in May to the council as well and sort of let them know after they adopted the ADU ordinance that, look, there is some HCD guidance. We do have a little bit more discretion, we do have discretion on unit sizes. Other, I think Doug has put in as an attachment what other municipalities, other jurisdictions have done with respect to the maximum size they've allowed in their jurisdictions. And it it ranges widely, 1,200 square feet in some like Fairfax and kind of Marin and then there's much more restrictive regulations elsewhere. So there's a wide spectrum. I think I think one of the reasons why we're bringing this back is because we really didn't have the conversation about when we originally adopted this, because we basically said, look, the state's saying 1,200, we should, we got to stick with that. And I think that said, I'm not, I don't want to take away that there wasn't, there was general, there was some conversation at the time about that number and whether or not that would be okay. So it was, didn't come up as a as a major, major problem with the ordinance, but we do think it's worth considering again, I guess, for the from from also the affordability side. I will say we have also, there was a question in our minds whether or not that was even realistic anyways. I mean, 1,200 seemed, were people going to actually push for that size and push for a 1,200 square foot unit, given that historically, most of these second units have been conversion of existing spaces or smaller accessory structures in someone's backyard. We have, as Doug mentioned, approved one up on Edison. And then we've also just fairly recently have talked to a number of other other folks who are interested in in pursuing the 1,200 square foot size and some of those folks are here tonight. So so I think there is interest in seeing getting to that that number, which is something that we didn't know before.
Okay.
Well. When we get a discussion, we'll talk about that. Well, all right, I think in terms of units, there's there's a number of different ways as the as the ordinances and the other jurisdictions have done, there's a number of different ways to go about unit size and tying it to different, whether it's attached or detached or, you know, you can see that there's some some jurisdictions talk about having a base of certain amount of size and then you can escalate that if you're lots of, like Nevada, if you're lots bigger. I think we'll hear more about that as we get some actually some input from our public members here as well. So I'm, that's up for discussion and I think it'd be great to have a some open dialogue about whether we're right, whether there needs to be some tweaks, what you guys think as well. And that's why we're bringing that forward.
And I just wanted to kind of elaborate on some of these other these other sections here. Some of these are more just for clarification, kind of implementing this ordinance, we realize that there's some, you know, room for improvement, such as the definition of existing structure. So the reason that that matters, how do we define existing structure is because it's it's with this changes to the state law, it's it's important because an existing structure is one where if you're creating a new structure, you have to conform to certain standards. If you're converting an existing structure, much many of those standards don't apply. So it kind of, you know, there's there's room for defining what that what that means.
And I think it is particularly relevant in Christmas Tree Hill and that's what we brought to the council in May. In Christmas Tree Hill, if you recall, we do have a limit, we have a bunch of zones and you're maxed out basically on two ADUs per zone on Christmas Tree Hill. And so if you call something, however, an ADU within an existing structure, that limitation on the number of ADUs per zone doesn't apply. So I think in particular, we're concerned about sort of a loophole that may be present up on Christmas Tree Hill whereby you can get around that cap if you sort of build, expand your existing home, call it, you know, and then wait, turn around after you build it or approve it and so on, and then go ahead and turn that existing structure into an ADU and thereby exceeding the cap that would otherwise apply. So that's in particular, I think, one where we see an important to fix.
Yeah, and and kind of piggybacking on that a little bit, so just to be more specific about if you're if you're creating unit within an existing space, the standards regarding, you know, setbacks and privacy and and those those things that were, you know, are in the ordinance do not apply. So if you wanted to take an existing bedroom or basement space in a house, it really needs to meet just three basic safety kind of standards. Ones that has an independent access and others that it has adequate setback for fire, for fire safety. And so it's really a streamlined process in that case if it's within an existing structure, you know, assuming it's a permitted legal, you know, existing structure. And so when we look at ways of reducing obstacles to creating these units, one of those may be, you know, the fact that currently we require noticing for all accessory dwelling unit applications, given that if you're building one of these within an existing structure, it's a ministerial permit, it's not discretionary, and yet we do require noticing regardless. We call it a courtesy notice. And I think maybe there can be some discussion about whether in this case, in one of these kind of streamlined permits where it's within an existing structure, if a courtesy notice should be required. If it's not required, there's that potential then that that fees can be reduced because obviously, you know, staff time, materials and all that would be reduced in processing the application. And it would also kind of streamline the process and, you know, speed speed up the process for someone trying to go through that approval process. Another kind of clarification is that currently we have a requirement that these units not be rented for less than 30 days. So that already exists, you know, short term rentals are not not permitted in the town of Coeur d'Alene. And and the purpose of this chapter in the zoning ordinance, the purpose of accessory dwelling units is to create, you know, long term housing for folks and not short term rentals. So that policy is already in place, but there may be some benefit in requiring that that time limit actually be part of the deed restriction that's already required for these units. Currently, a deed restriction is required with the county regarding owner occupancy and that one of the units has to be occupied by the owner. But it's possible that there would be some benefit to adding the 30 day requirement to that as well and having those both recorded. And then lastly is just kind of clarification about consistency with prior approvals. As you know, as we just went through and often do with design review applications specifically, oftentimes they're approved with specific conditions that are necessary and integral to making the findings. And this is about kind of looking at what do you do when you have someone who's gone through design review? It was approved through a specific, you know, set of conditions, a set of site conditions, and then the proposal to add an accessory dwelling unit would modify those conditions. And so it's just looking at how do you how do you ensure consistency with those prior approvals as appropriate? So that that kind of outlines.
Right, and I think, you know, we're, that's really to provide what Doug was just mentioning, really clarity. I think that that's sort of consistent with our current process of permit amendments that we've you've seen on many occasions. So obviously, if any, there's any changes to site plans and conditions that have been approved through by the commission through the design review process or any other process of entitlement, and then there's changes to that, then obviously we have a process for dealing with that. Sometimes that would end up back at the commission. So it's clarifying that process. We've had some questions about that recently and so we thought it would be helpful for applicants knowing that going into the process. And I think lastly, and this was something that was raised at the council, there was, which we didn't include in the staff report, but but it is in the was in the council report on May 2nd, we talked about defining parking, one of the conditions or one of the requirements of the state laws is that parking shall not be required if, excuse me, if the ADU is within half a mile of a transit stop. We think there could be some added clarity there as well, what does that mean? And so at the very least, we would want to define how you define a half a mile should be defined as, we believe, walking distance, that's the intent, and that you would leave, you would not require parking because you are can access that transit stop without a vehicle, presumably. I mean, you can always, you can always take your Uber, Uber or Lyft or something like that as well, but you're in proximity. But we think that's obviously should be defined not as the crow flies, but as someone that would actually maneuver by sidewalks or pedestrian or vehicular routes. And transit stop, I think, as well, we would want to clarify that that refers to an actual stop and not just to access to a segment or some some point along the actual path that a public transportation travels. So again, just adding for clarity sakes, so everybody knows going into this what are the requirements are, we think this is a way to strengthen and clarify the existing code as well. I think it's important. So with that, again, the intent is to, on some of these, I think we're much, we have some clear, our own views and some clear ideas of what we would want to change and, you know, sort of giving the public and you, the commission, a heads up on where we want to go in that direction. Others, such as unit size, with I think that there's a more fluid and open conversation about the direction on that. And ultimately, would love to hear if you have any other thoughts as well about having seen the ordinance and have any questions for us about how it's been working, but other things that you think might be helpful in implementing this this ordinance that you adopted last year, so.
Okay, that's very well presented, but I want to ask the other commissioners if they have any questions about what's in the slide that's on the screen right now and if you want to, if you want any more clarity about any of those issues that are up there.
Yes.
Jennifer.
I have a few questions. Existing structure, I'm assuming, obviously this is different than the existing footprint, but what if someone wanted to add a second story and they were including adding an accessory dwelling above or as part of that second story? Is that considered an existing structure or where does that then fall in the permitting process?
So it's a question if if they wanted to build a second story and then later down the road wanted to turn that portion.
Let's say that, pick any house in Madera Gardens and you want to build a second story and you're going to add a master suite and you're going to add a granny unit or an accessory dwelling unit above your garage as part of your second story.
Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be considered an existing, existing.
So it's not within the existing footprint, it's literally within the existing structure?
Yes.
So if you think of it in terms of detached ADUs, where it'd be new square footage, not attached, attached, which is additional square footage, but it's added on like your example somewhere, or what I think Adam and Doug were referring to was where they're converting internal space and that's to an existing structure where they're taking part of it. Because if you remember the first time the legislation, this discussion came back is there was some thinking that empty nesters would take some of their additional square footage if you had, you know, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 square feet, is that you would take that and convert that within the existing structure to an ADU.
So under that scenario that I just leaned out then, does that just require then, like, you would just basically go through the same permitting process that you would for adding a second story or is there like some added?
It's a really good, this is a really, I think, good point that I don't think there's much guidance on at this point in the state law. But if you're combined, I mean, it raises a really valid question, one that we came up with. a really valid question. One that we came up with, we actually saw this, I think, before you were on the commission with a property on Grove, where they were building a second unit over our garage, but the garage was, and this was all new, and the garage was actually associated with the primary dwelling. So it's sort of like, normally that garage would require design review too. So I think, I think we will be presented with that issue at some point. I'm not, I, I can't sit here and tell you right now exactly how we would deal with the design review and sort of
Pull out the piece that is actually the, the ADU from that.
It would probably just be part of the larger design review and process.
Well, it's, I think we would, we would do our best, I think what we would have to do is we'd have to try to adhere to as much as possible with the intent of the ADU ordinance and the state law. But at some point, there is a, we also have to comply with design review and the requirements for design review. So it, but, but I think that is something that we can look at in more depth and try to look into, do some more research and see how other municipalities jurisdictions have dealt with that. And maybe that's something we can come back with to maybe distinguish that a little bit better. In terms of fees and processing, it, it's sort of one in the same. How do you, you know, it's almost, it would almost be cheaper in a way if you just went through design review, because you're only, you know, that, rather than sort of paying the design review and
Okay.
ADU fees. So it, it, there's, there's a lot to sort of, how do you deal with that situation? We've thought about it, but really, I think we would want to come back and think a little bit harder about how you, how you would, in practical, how we would actually do it if faced again with that issue. Last time we, we went through a design review process.
Okay. So just to call your attention, if you look at, in the staff report, the actual ordinance is in there, and when the state law was, before the HCD guidelines were available, and the town adopted this, the town was allowed to set forth objective standards, not subjective, that would be considered. And so the town set forth this, the subsections in eighteen point three, one point zero five oh accessory dwelling unit regulations. So that was the initial attempt, and especially in subsection six, when it talks about architectural compatibility, E for lighting, F for privacy, G for views, sunlight, landscaping. So that was the initial attempt to set forth the objective standards that instead of a design review that you had to comply with if you were at, at an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, and in fact, interestingly there, we, there, there's where we, the one place where we do have sort of a view definition of where, because they're objective, you cannot block views, increase the blockage of views of the Bay or Mount Tam, in this particular case, with a ADU.
So is this?
But
Oh, sorry.
There's not the discretion that you have with the desire view. So it is two different.
Right. So that was set forth so that staff could just go through a checklist of objective standards, whether it met or didn't need it.
Uh huh. Okay. What are the current fees associated with ADUs?
So just in term, in terms of the planning entitlement, it's eight hundred and fifty dollar fee. But then there's going to, there's, depending on the type of unit, there will, there will be additional fees. Regardless, there'll be building permit, kind of inspection fees, part of that, that process, which comes after the planning process. But then there's other, there's sewer and water district fees that may be associated, and those may differ depending on whether it's a new separate structure or whether it's created through the conversion of existing space.
So do you have an idea on average of like these seven units that are currently applying? What's going to be the total all-in fees for this?
It's, it's a good question, but we don't, don't know, yeah.
Yeah, just to help clarify, so that, you know, if it's a new structure, then you guys go through these design review and process, and that's a fee that is essentially a T and M fee.
So, so the eight hundred and fifty dollars applies to any new accessory dwelling unit, regardless of whether it's detached or attached. And the, you know, the fact, basically, these objective standards that are in here are not technically design review. They're, they're, you know, fixed standards that have to be met for any detached unit.
Are these, are we in the process, like, as part of this discussion, are we weighing in on what's in our current ordinance? Yeah, okay.
Well, to the extent that it still has to always, it still have to comply with the state law, but yes.
Right. Like, I'm actually, I'm actually surprised that it's, and maybe that was to, to your point, Judith, to make it easier for staff to do the approvals. But I feel like, overall, some of these, the architectural compatibility is pretty, is fairly strict, when I feel like the whole point of this is for us to be encouraging more ADUs. So like, the idea that windows shall be located to avoid line of sight to windows of adjacent properties, like, I'm just thinking again, I'll give the Madera Gardens example, because that's where I live. But it's like, there's no way that you would build, you would be able to build an ADU, let's say, or convert your garage, and let's say you wanted to like add a window, you know, where the garage door is, like, you're going to be looking across the street at your neighbor's living room, because that's the reality of how the streets are. So that seems like just kind of excessive, or like the, even like the, the view blockage and, like, the accessory dwelling shall not increase the shadow on any window of the main building on any adjacent property. I mean, like, again, I'm just thinking about, what are we trying to accomplish here? I think we're trying to increase the housing stock and encourage people to do this. So I don't know, I mean, again, like, there's a lot of detail in here, but I think just in general, should we be looking at all of this to see how we can be more accepting of these types of conversions and structures, rather than less?
Well, I mean, I think that's definitely guidance and direction we'd like to hear from the, from the commission. I mean, we did, as a whole, I mean, this did go through a fairly
Rigorous process.
Robust process a year ago, and these were in there, but absolutely, I mean, this is an evolving ordinance. It's obviously, we're, we're seeing more reaction to it from residents and from more encouragement for it. So it's something that, you know, when we interact with residents at the counter and we hear what they're encountering and trying to meet these, we take that into consideration, I guess. You know, maybe Doug, you have some insight on, have these been really problematic
Has it been onerous or not?
In terms of meeting these architectural compatibility requirements.
I mean, in my own, there's, you know, there's the things that we discuss at the counter with folks and the things that we may never hear, because it is possible that certain things, when someone's contemplating these, to them, it might make or break their application. We have no way of knowing that if they never come forward. Those who do come forward and are working through these things, I think often understand that whether it's a ministerial process or discretionary process, they, they want something that works for them, but they also want it to work for, you know, blend in the neighborhood. And I think it's kind of, I think it's generally understood that these things are trying to, trying to achieve that. I think it's a totally a fair question as to whether they go, you know, go too far, if there's ways to
Okay.
To modify them.
I mean, I guess it sounds like then you're not, and it's interesting to even see, since we've had this conversation, it's not like there's this like buildup of like, we talked about this, you know, because I'm definitely the one who's like, let's get them, like, get as many as you can, you know, because it's like you have, you know, the Tam ridges, it's like, people have to like figure out, like, what are the alternatives? Okay, well, no one wants, you know, a dense, multifamily, you know, project building Corder Madera, well, like, everyone needs to live somewhere and no one wants more traffic. So it's like, and I know that these are all, again, balancing acts, but, so I guess on just the size of unit, because I know you guys are asking us to weigh in on that too, I don't see any reason to restrict it down from twelve hundred square feet. I understand the concern around parking, and that's what's driving it, which is like, okay, well, you'd only have one, I mean, but I don't buy that. Like, you can have two people who live in a five hundred square foot studio, or you can have one person who lives in a twelve hundred square foot two-bedroom. And I don't think that it's us, it's our place to like judge that that's how, that amount of space is going to be used. So.
And to that point, if I may, if we look at the, the way different, different jurisdictions have kind of handled that
Yeah.
And, and tried to balance the, the benefits of creating, you know, new housing units with, you know, some of the potential impacts. I think some of them have, have addressed it by looking at the floor area, yes, but also looking at the number of bedrooms and setting limits, whether it's one or two bedrooms. And so you'll see here some of those, you know, these jurisdictions are doing that.
Maximum of two bedrooms.
So just to add some clarity, keep in mind that the reason the town initially adopted this late in twenty sixteen is state law that was going to be effective in January twenty seventeen set forth the standards, and had the town not adopted anything, it would have had to default to state law. So I'm not sure I'd characterize that the town, you know, came up this on their own with the goal of increasing, you know, housing stock, although that certainly was a, a stated concern of, by the council and the commission. But again, it was a requirement rather than, it's not like the town dreamed this up saying, we need to create all these, you know, ADU units. I mean, they certainly have encouraged that, but I don't want to mischaracterize how this came into effect and why the town. And again, since the town was early in the process of adopting it, before a lot of the other local jurisdictions moved forward, some of them waited till state law came into effect in early twenty seventeen. I think that these were reasonable in light of unknown potential impacts to neighboring residences and trying to keep the, the idea and the character of the community and things like that.
Just, just to, sorry to labor this, but a point of correction a little bit, is just that I think the JADUs was, was the town was very keen on sort of pushing for the junior accessory dwelling units as an ordinance. It so happened that the state not only enacted an ADU ordinance, but also required a JADU ordinance as well to be adopted. Actually, no, it was optional, it was optional, but we pushed for that. And, and I think, but I do think as well, when we went through the housing element process and, and Doug put that, you know, those slides and the policies up there, we, we, you know, clearly this is a way that the town, I think, feels that they can meet the housing goals, but I will also note, emphasize in terms of the housing element, affordable, affordable housing goals as well. And that's, that's where I think, I just would encourage everyone to also think about perhaps how we, how we make that happen, so.
I think that, oh, sorry, I've been talking a lot, but.
So, you know, to the, the point of the things that were on the previous screen there, Doug, you know, with the unit size, the definitions that we might want to tune a little bit, or that we get the deed restriction and there are the number of bedrooms, these kinds of things, want to zero in on. And there are great suggestions for starting point. To Jennifer's point, there may be some other things that we might try to. I will also reiterate to Adam's point that you guys just sort of had to insert some language in here that was a part of the state law, and that's what's in there, but also protect the town from just being forced to adopt anybody walking in the door with an ADU application. So there are, those are minor architectural guidelines, but they're, they're there to some extent.
Yeah, and in the same way that the housing element, you know, encourages these as a type of a housing unit and as a way to increase housing, the housing elements also there talking about, you know, protecting and enhancing the quality of existing neighborhoods and existing housing, I think, as well. So that's where this is a balance of trying to create new housing, but doing it in a way through these type of objective standards that is sensitive to those, to those things.
I'm sort of eliminating the noticing. And I, the deed restriction, I think, is fine, the thirty-day minimums. In terms of incentives for providing affordable units, I feel like it is almost inherent in just the size of these units and the lack of amenities. Like, you're not going to pay the same for a four hundred square foot garage that you're going to pay for a four hundred square foot, you know, Tam ridges. Like, I wouldn't call those to be particularly affordable at, you know, four bucks a foot. So I think that's, I mean, I'd be curious to hear what other people's perspective are, but I feel like it's really complicated to assume or think that individuals are going to be, I, I would be curious to hear what maybe some of the options would be of encouraging affordability, which of course is a great and noble goal.
No.
But very, very challenging to affect and regulate.
Possible. So may I move on to Charles here?
Please.
Okay, Charles.
Okay. So it's specifically to the potential amendments, I'm going to speak to you.
Just, just, we're still on questions.
Right, these are all questions for staff to clarify. As far as unit sizes go, and addressing the affordability, and the wording that I read, and to understand staff and the town's position in past discussions, is it that we're looking for affordability, as I understand it from, say, units in San Francisco where there's a certain portion that have below-market rates assigned to them? Or is it encouraging affordability by increasing housing stock, or increasing the overall stocks so the demand goes down so that rents are just cheaper? That's, in my mind, that's what we're talking about as affordability. The other one is legislation and, and like imposed on, and, and it's, it's two very different takes on that interpretation of affordability.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think it's a good question, but I think really the way that this was couched in, and, and the element that's, throws a little wrinkle into that, I would say, is the, the way that we have to address RENA and housing element numbers. And for that reason, we, when we did our last housing element, we basically relied on surveys that have been done in other, in Marin County and whatnot, and have said essentially that, you know, by design or by just the fact that these are built, and we are focused on affordability in Corder Madera. So it's not like a, from, from the RENA perspective and from the housing element perspective. So we're not sort of, the idea of, of sort of in general increasing housing supply is going to make housing affordable elsewhere outside of Corder Madera, I think is not necessarily the, the goal that we're, while, while maybe a, a good goal is not what we're in the housing
Right. And I don't know that I'm asking that, I'm just saying if, if there's a family of two or three
Well, well.
That are looking for houses and there's more on the market, that they'll probably be more affordable.
But I will say that the consideration where we have to meet our housing goals, we do have to meet housing goals for very low income, low income and moderate income residents in Corder Madera, to meet our RENA housing numbers. And those are defined more or less like the, the
And is that incentivized to developers?
But
And can that be incentivized to residential?
No, no. So what we've argued is that, that essentially, through surveys of actually how these units have been rent, basically rented, and the cost of these units and who they've been rented to, by the very fact that they're being built, there have been in the past affordable to these different income groups. So if you actually look at their, what they're being rented for, in terms of the actual rental number, the people who are, you know, that, those will equate to somebody who is the equivalent of a low-income family, or a moderate-income family, or a very low-income family. And so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, but I, but I think, and the, we're, I mean, there is a question in, in my mind about, and one of the reasons about the unit size that we brought up, you know, is that going to continue moving forward based on the types of second units that we see? And next time around, when we go to the, basically talk about what our next survey is, when we talk about RENA in the next cycle, are we going to see the same results in the, in what these units are being rented for? And I think that's a, that's a question that sort of we're, I don't know the answer to that, but it's something to think about.
Right. And so I brought up, so then to segue into what you were getting at, the survey. Right, and so I brought up, so then to segue into what you were getting at, the surveys, I had a question about lot sizes.
Yep.
So we have a limited lot size and we understand general square footages that are built on those. So in evaluating how many 1,200 square foot, if there's only 20 lots in the whole city that have enough, you know, square footage to do a second unit, is that worth really weighing in on just allow, you know, or if it's, you know?
So would that be helpful to?
I thi- I think an understanding of quantifying like how many actual developable, uh, lots can actually support any, anywhere between 700 and 1,200. And do we, if, if we, you know, what's the effect if we change that number, right?
Yep.
Either on the low end or the high end, do we lose a substantial amount of potential housing units? Um, I guess that was, uh, one question I had. The other one is distance, um, I, I had a que- uh, have you identified a tool for verifying the distance, both with the applicant and then within the planning commission?
Distance what?
You mean like the.
Distance to the bus, because I, I think, so it's like, you know, do you just type into ways, hey, I'm going from this to this bus stop and then he spits out a distance? Like I think if you're going to have that requirement, you need to think about tools that, that are, that are registrable and can calculate that. That was, um.
Okay.
So then also with unit size, um, I noticed a lot of the other local jurisdictions had percentages. And my interpretation of that, just at a glance, is that, uh, they're basically limiting it so that you can't circumvent the major renovation addition requirements, right? And so is that a, like, you know, you know, if it's above 40, what is that trigger within Corder Madara? Can it be used as another loophole to, to get less stringent or easier approvals? And, and therefore we should put a cap on it because we really want a certain level of design review and stuff for these major renovations, right? That was, and, and you can answer that now or you can come back later.
Not sure about that.
The, I, I also am all for closing loopholes with, uh, with, in certain areas about the existing structures. I think in your presentation and just my understanding, I don't understand, uh, what all, what the definition of what existing structures are. So to defining it even, i- is it a shed, is it a, is it a standalone garage hanging off of roadway, like, um, you know? Because, because if, it, you know, if, if you just, if you just go put up a tough shed and say, oh, I got a existing structure, right? Can I build a unit there and, and then somehow, I need to understand that. I, I'm definitely for closing loopholes, but, um, I just need more clarification. Uh, noticing, um, I guess for me noticing at a, at a larger degree for larger renovations and stuff is about alerting the public in case they want to appeal or become more involved, right? The ADU, i- is the noticing about appealing or, or challenging, or is it li- like, or is it about, um, just making the public aware that it's happening and, and that it's under, not under that same guideline? Or, or, you know, if we want to reduce fees, but then also keep the public engaged, is it that we do a courtesy on next door or some other, uh, noticing?
No, it was the second one you mentioned, really, there's not a real ability to appeal, but it was sort of like, hey, this is going on in your neighborhood, heads up. And we, we, we went through this when we adopted it, that felt people had a right to know, even though they, you know, we'd be clear in the notice that you, it's under a different provision, you don't have the same appeal rights, but it was sort of just, it's a courtesy.
Right, and I understand there's a cost involved, but I also want to understand from a, uh, from a overall town responsibility, if neighbors are not alerted to any kind of construction activity, does it create more of a kind of reporting environment where you get a lot of complaints or queries and therefore, you know, you're going to have that administrative, uh, kind of, whether you do it or not, so it's fair to, to kind of burden that on the, on, 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 on the people that are benefiting from the.
Well, it's a, it's a flat fee at some, for the units, so it's not.
It's, it's, it's still attached to, to overall kind of, you know, maintenance of, of city staff salaries and stuff like that, right? And, and, and mailing and.
Yeah, well, I mean, we came down on fees about two years ago on this, when we, second unit fees went, came down from like, I think, 1,100 or 1,200 to 850 with the council. It's not directly tied at this point to any sort of.
Right.
Staff.
So, um, I guess.
I shouldn't say it.
So, so, uh, if, if it is, um, that it, it's a burden, a financial burden, is there a way to prove that, like, you know, I mean, like, I just, I just feel, I, maybe that's getting too far and, and I just wanted to question about it. The other thing is the seven that have already been approved or gone through approval, did you, have you given the square footages of what those are?
That's my question.
And do you know what they are in general?
They're, they're not listed, um, we can certainly provide those. Um, let's see. I mean, I, I can describe attributes of these different projects, but I don't have a square footage available.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to understand what the general appetite for the last, since that ordinance has come, like what, what we're seeing as an average, um, to see if, you know, it, it's not really worth addressing the big ones because nobody's building them, or, you know, in general, this is what we're looking at so we can tune our responses to generally what's being built, I guess. Um, the, uh, that was my spiel, sorry.
Okay. Um, before I turn it over to, to Phyllis, I would just say that, you know, affordability is an issue. So a new detached structure up there, uh, 21 Edison and Seven Loop, they're going to be the most expensive ones. The other ones are going to have an affordability index that's much lower, you know, and that's the idea of ADU. But if somebody wants, they're going to build a new detached structure, it's going to be expensive. They're going to spend X number of dollars per square foot. The other ones are going to be much more affordable. We can't control that. People can go for a market value or they can go with a, you know, a conversion and it's going to be much cheaper. Um, maybe they won't put the same level of finish in, into it that, you know, so it rents for less, that's where the affordability lands. Um, I just wanted to say about square footage is that, one time you did a study of this, the lots in town and you provided it, it's maybe a part of this, right? And.
It was relating to lot coverage, but.
Yeah, but, you know, 7,500 square foot lot, isn't, that's comprises a lot of the town, right? Um, 7,500, somewhere in there.
Yeah, 7,500 is the, is the minimum lot size if you were to create a new R1, single-family lot today.
So that's a, a building square footed size of 3,000 square feet, that's an FAR, 3,000 square feet for 7,500. So a family itself needs 2,200, 2,400, you know, to live in, it's kind of at a minimum. And then you add an ADU on top of that, so there's, you know, they're crammed up against that 3,000 square foot. If you get to a 10,000 square foot lot, you've got 4,000 square feet to play with. So, you know, if you have a 2,200 square foot, 2,500 square foot home, you've still got plenty of room to add in that. So I think the scalable index is appropriate that the other towns are following, and that's just what I'm looking at in that realm. So, um, Phyllis.
Okay, well, one of my questions I had written down is what is the square footage of each one? I think that's important to know, and there are two new detached structures, it's also that last one, Seven Lupine Drive. Um, let's skip around a little, you, when you ask about, uh, number of bedrooms, you'd probably need close to the 1,200 size to have two bedrooms. And I think it would make, I think it would make sense, I mean, if you're going to convert.
Just questions, I'd like to hear also of the public.
I, the question is, are you considering, all right, if you've got a 400 square foot garage that's converted, you're not going to have much room for anything. If there's a 1,200 square foot, then you're going to have room for more rooms. So how would you look at it? Uh, where is that, not that one, the, um, one that had your questions? Because you're asking about the number of bedrooms, um, the incentives for, for providing affordable units, I think, it would depend upon the size of the units. I mean, it is certainly, if you want it to be affordable, I would say if there was a small single in Wind Cup, and I don't think there is, or a studio, whatever they call them, with all those amenities, it would be something that would be far more expensive than if you're living in a converted garage. So I think there's, just the creation of these is an incentive for affordable housing that should be looking at. I thought we talked about, when you told about rental requirements, deed restrictions, I thought we had made it fairly clear that in Corder Madara, you have to rent for 30 days, isn't that, is it not put in?
Well, not, that's a requi- that's a code, but this, a deed restriction would go further.
Okay, because I think that would be important. But in looking at that, and we've had this discussion before about the owners occupying one unit, and that's into our code, and yet, and I know they've never come back, but with the preserve, where they're going to, they, what they wish to do is build those homes that have ADUs attached to them and have them leased separately besides being leased. They don't sell anything, all they do is lease. And they said that they had an.
Different.
A leasing agent on site at all times. Does that mean that becomes part of the restrictions that we want in a deed that you have to have either or? Or do we just say you has, one has to be owner occupied? How do you restrict a deed in that case?
That's a, that's a particular application that we shouldn't be talking about right now, and we shouldn't get into any specific applications at this point.
Well, that was the one I'd heard of.
Right.
But as far as the other, I mean, we do need a definition of existing structure that.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Um, let's, Bob, do you have anything that you want to ask to have quickly before, so we can get these patient people to stand up and say theirs?
Uh, no, most of my questions have been addressed.
All right, thank you. So at that point, um, I know we have three members out there and of, who might wish to make a public statement. So please step up to the microphone and state your name, and, um, you have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, Joel Hernandez, 159 Prince Royal Drive. So this is in response to the staff report asking the planning commission to consider further restricting the town laws on building ADUs. Uh, the Corder Madara 2015 housing element, which was informed by community feedback, states it will, quote, "encourage the development of second units, recognizing that these can provide an important source of income for lower-income seniors who want to age in place, as well as affordable housing for caretakers and other low, lower-income service providers or family members," end quote. We pose the following question, why are we here today to discuss further restricting the ability of town citizens to build ADUs? Let's be clear in that some of the proposals in the staff report does just that, decrease the size maximum, making it difficult to build while having existing conditions on your property and the like. First, regarding the size, the staff report originally admitted that other towns in Marin have ADU size limits that are also 1,200 square feet. I believe Lily Pat Holmes addressed this in a letter to you, that Corder Madara is not a single outlier with a size maximum and is compliant with the state laws as is. Second, regarding the town's goals for ADUs, in reference to the May 2, 2017, staff report presented to the town council, it is notable that Corder Madara had the highest application fees for ADUs listed there compared to other Marin cities. We have to ask ourselves, why does our town have the highest application fees for ADUs? Also, in the housing element 2015, the town explicitly stated two goals with ADUs. What were those two goals? One, to decrease the ADU application fees, and two, to decrease impact fees associated with building an ADU. Why are we not here talking about what we should be talking about? That is, how as a town can we do better to encourage the build of ADUs to be in keeping with our housing element goals? Not to impose more restrictions in the code. Regarding diversity of population and affordability, the size of ADUs, even at a maximum 1,200 square feet, is smaller than most homes in town. This makes them inherently more affordable, more affordable for rental purposes and can serve a more diverse population. Corder Madara Housing Element states, quote, "Many new second units will be affordable to lower-income individuals," end quote. Why would a town like Corder Madara further restrict their build when it is already so financially difficult for many people to move into a town like Corder Madara? Corder, Corder Madara should have more ADUs that can house a variety of populations. For example, Housing Element 2015 again states, under diversity of populations, quote, "Housing opportunities for families with children should not be limited because necessary facilities are not provided on site." And also, quote, "Encourage two and three-bedroom housing units affordable for lower and moderate-income families with children," end quote. At 1,200 square feet, one can more comfortably and legally accommodate small families in ADUs. Decreasing the size significantly limits their use of, for families. Corder Madara prides itself on being an age-friendly and a family-friendly town. Again, why are we here discussing more restrictions on ADUs? Is diversity of population in town sufficient? We can do better. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Stacy Abico, 159 Prince Royal Drive. I'd also like to comment on the staff report recommendations for the PC to consider imposing more restriction and burden to the build of ADUs. So regarding the staff presenting that there have been seven ADU applications since the laws changed in January of this year, while it is great to hear that there are some approved units, this falls short of adequacy given the housing crisis in California, and specifically the Bay Area and Marin, Corder Madara definitely included. We should be encouraging more ADU applications. The town's leadership has recently openly debated the 500 new housing units that ABAG has envisioned as growth for Corder Madara in the next few decades as per Plan Bay Area 2040. The town leadership has contended that we are already a built-out city and this is an unfair number of projecting housing needs to allocate to a small town like Corder Madara. Why would our town go, then go back and restrict the very few alternative but effective methods that we have to build unique and affordable housing such as ADUs? The town needs to have a consistent message. We do not want to be imposed a large housing needs allocation because we are already doing everything we can to encourage appropriate building as required by the state, and in particular with respect to ADUs. Why then would we contradict ourselves and give the message to the larger community that our town is further restricting the build of ADUs? It just doesn't add up or make much, much sense. There are certainly large structures being built in town, but restricting ADUs further, which is already maxed out at a reasonable 1,200 square feet, is just barking up the wrong tree. Town citizens with a larger property size would potentially rather build a larger primary home instead of building an ADU if more restrictions and size limitations renders ADUs less desirable to build. There is arguably way more benefit to the town for an ADU to be built rather than larger primary homes. Lastly, California law explicitly states that town laws cannot be so, quote, "arbitrary, excessive, or burdensome so as to unreasonably restrict the ability of homeowners to create ADU," end quote. In the Housing Element Housing Needs Analysis, it states, quote, "The town will continue to build on its success supporting second units," end quote. The town will not succeed in supporting second units if it goes backwards and spends its time, such as today, in identifying ways to make ADUs more restrictive and less desirable. Let's focus the town's efforts on continuing to encourage the build of ADUs. The Housing Element is filled with information about how the town values ADUs. Let us continue to value their build and encourage applications. Let us not take step back, steps backwards and ignore the reality of the housing crisis, inevitable population growth, and the need to encourage and support diversity in town. Uh, I wasn't going to get into this, but since I have 20 seconds and it's been in the discussion with the PC about how it would affect property owners, we have a 16,000 square foot lot, as four of the five of you are probably aware from our major design review. So a lot of the issues that you are actually considering directly affect us. So if you have any direct questions as to our interest in building an ADU and what our thought process would be and how the size impacts would affect our property, we'd be happy to answer that personally on a personal level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. My name is Bill Rose, 104 Palm Avenue. Uh, I just want to first start by thanking the commission and staff for taking this item up. Um, I'm a supervising planner for the City of Santa Rosa, and so we tonight just passed our ADU ordinance. And so we're a year behind Corder Madara. I expect with some of the things that we did, we probably will come back in time and, and review, just like you are tonight, to see how we can enhance and make that ordinance better. Um, just quickly, while I'm here, Santa Rosa's ordinance, it got passed tonight. Uh, two topics that we're discussing here as it relates to what we did in Santa Rosa, 1,200 square feet is allowed. That is the square footage maximum. Uh, that's what we've been doing for the last year under the state guidance, since we did not have an ordinance in place. The one thing that was added was, uh, we required owner occupancy unless you wanted to make one of the units an affordable unit. So that was added last week at the ordinance introduction, and then tonight at the second reading, it made its way through. So that'll be part of our ordinance. Um, I just wanted to quickly talk about a couple of things. So in addition to being a planner, in addition to being a residence, resident here, I have an ADU. I got mine approved in 2002, I believe. I needed to do the use permit, design review, it was before any of these changes were in place. Uh, it was a much, much different time. And I'm going to talk about that in just a moment about how things have changed since then. Uh, first off, size, 1,200 square feet. I think that what a lot, uh, that a lot of us are feeling is that just, it feels too big. Uh, because we've probably all at some point in our life lived in a unit that's smaller than that. But I think to say that it feels too big. But I think to say that it feels too big is not a criteria if we are to make a change. You know, if you make a change, you have to make findings, and I don't think that'll stand up any test. It just feels too big. So there has to be measurable criteria. Is it compatible with the neighborhood and things like that? Some suggestions for me as a homeowner, as an ADU owner, looking to improve, I look for options. And so a couple of suggestions as far as size. Perhaps you can have a maximum size, 800, 900 square feet, and then you can have requirements of single-story construction up to 1,000 or 1,200 square feet. So you're kind of working your way up proportionately. Same thing, maybe you deduct for basements or partial basements. The next thing I wanted to talk about is owner occupancy, not in the context of the 30 days, but just in general, owner occupancy. If I don't have the owner occupancy deed restriction, it just gives me more flexibility. With construction costs at $300 to $600 a square foot, with rents at $3 to $350 a square foot for an ADU on a single-family property, it becomes very important to have as many options as possible. I've rented for years on a number of properties around here as a landlord, and I have had people that I think, if I may just have 30 more seconds, quickly, my personal opinion is the reason for the deed restriction for owner occupancy is not to disrupt the fabric of the neighborhood or the fabric of the community. You want people that are residents, they stay here, the owner on site takes care of the property. As a landlord, I've had tenants that I think by all measures are incredible members of our community. I've had a veterinarian, I've had tech executives, I've had a NASA scientist, I've had a teacher, a Coast Guard officer, long-term tenants, seven, eight, 10, 20 years. And they've volunteered, they've been members of, you know, different activity groups here. And I don't think that renters today are the same. I think the stigma has changed. I think today you have empty nesters, you have people that want to rent, and they can add to our community. And so I would encourage the commission to consider a removal of the deed restriction in total for those purposes. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I intend to continue to work with staff to just share ideas and information as to what we're experiencing in Santa Rosa. I would say ADUs are a centerpiece for our way to address the housing issues, in particular now, more than ever. So, thank you.
Mr. Rose, thank you. I do have a question for you. And you said that the, you talked about affordable units, and you said there was an exception. I wrote it down here, and I'm not quite sure of what you said about that, but you said something to make it more affordable, incentivized affordability with an exception.
Required owner occupancy.
Yeah.
How did you define?
Well, in Santa Rosa, for example, the requirement that was added, and I should say, for the last year, we have not had an owner occupancy restriction, we've not had a square footage restriction, and we've seen a dramatic uptick in applications. It'll be interesting to see if that continues, because we added the one provision that says now you have, you don't have to be owner occupied if you have one of your units as an affordable unit. So it's basically saying, the city is saying, homeowner, we'll give you the break, you can be an off-site landlord, and you can rent both units, but one of them has to be affordable.
How do you define affordability?
So in Santa Rosa, we have a housing authority. It's under contract. This unit would be under contract for a term of 30 years, and it's 80% of median income. So Adam was talking about the different levels of affordability, and that's a low-income.
We have it for Corder Madera affordability index that's in the book, so to speak. And that is an index that you've applied up there.
Correct.
To incentivize those affordable units.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And I think that, as was mentioned, some of the rents, because, you know, the other thing is, we look at variety of housing stock, and you get variety just by the virtue of a number of lots of different sizes and shapes and what people can invest in their property. So you will get ADUs, as history has shown for the last year, everything from 500 or 600 square feet up to 1,200. And so that variety also helps to do that, because you will get some smaller square footage, that that's what people can build, and their rents will just inherently be lower. Rents right now on these units are 300 to 350 a square foot.
Wow, okay. This gentleman is a sort of goldmine. Anybody else have any questions for him? So.
Do you guys have a 30-day?
Same as Corder Madera.
You do have a 30-day.
Yeah, it's a restriction, yeah.
We have a note here from Rachel Guinness, the Lily Pad Homes, and she says, "As long we're discussing this," she would like us to consider allowing both an ADU and a JADU on the same property, and that this has been possible. What is Santa Rosa doing as respects this? Have they even looked at that?
Yeah, I can't recall seeing one JADU application this year. So I manage the current planning team, so I see most of the applications, if not all, that come in. I can't recall seeing one, and I think the trends here are the same. But again, a number of ADU applications. And I expect, since tonight's ordinance was the second reading, it will actually go into effect in 30 days, we'll probably see a dramatic increase over the next 30 days because they won't have the deed restriction.
But there has not been a discussion at the ordinance or code level of allowing both on the same property?
It's my understanding you can do both. I'd have to look, and I can get that information to Adam, and he can distribute it to you.
That would be interesting to find out what they're doing in other jurisdictions.
All right. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. So we're at a demarcation point here. We've got 10:30. And so I would solicit from the commission members whether we want to finish discussion of this and get, then call it a night, or what you'd like to do. We would vote to go to 11 o'clock and finish this discussion item, or continue it, and then finish up the rest of the agenda on another night.
I would like to know what Adam wants from us as respects this item. What are you looking for from the commission before we decide whether or not to continue?
Well, he had a slide of stuff there, and we can address those or not.
Well, our intention would be to come back with essentially an update to the current ADU ordinance with some of the things that we see in here. I mean, if you, I think it'd be great to hear direction on the size. We heard some of that from the commissioners, but if the consensus is you don't think it's worthwhile moving forward with any changes to the existing ordinance at this time, that would be helpful to hear as a group, or if you think that's worth further exploring on the ADU size. That would be the most critical thing. The other things, I think, we can come back to, and they're really more tightening up, clarifying, strengthening things. And then we'll also try to bring back some information that you requested with an ordinance, proposed ordinance amendment.
So with that said, I mean, I know what I would rattle off in response to the bullet points or the things that are on the screen, and I don't know if anybody else is ready to do such a thing, or how much of a further discussion you want to get into with staff on these items. So.
I don't have any problem with having a maximum of 1,200 square feet, because I don't think there are that many lots that would allow it.
So to the point, then, there's a number of elements that they've thrown before us, and the report is quite illuminating as to what we've got. So would you have any other statements you'd want to make to staff to come back to us with a?
Can we go back to that slide? Just, we're going to ask that motion.
Which slide?
I guess the first thing is to continue.
Do we have to vote to keep going? I'm tired, so I'm okay with continuing on, but I would like to get out of here sooner rather than later.
Bob. Second. One sentence answers per item.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's.
But if we want to go through this, I don't, if we're just looking for feedback on size, that's probably.
Can we just get that? It'd be helpful, I think, on that particular.
That's probably a quick response, so Phil has said yay.
So let's do that. Let's move across the dais here with the unit size and some discussion of either creating a, like the other towns have scalable, you know, criteria.
You have to vote to extend the meeting first if you're going to discuss that.
Okay, so we'll do that. So will we vote to extend the meeting to get through this one point of discussion and so forth? Do you want to do that? Do I hear a motion?
We're only thinking of you, Peter.
Sure. Yes, we can extend it to get through this one.
Okay, so.
Motion.
Motion to continue the meeting.
Second, all right. Can I say Commissioner Bundy?
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Friedman.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair McCaff.
Aye.
Chairman Chase.
Yes. All right. That said, then, before us, you see in the staff report the different community scalable standards, and I was throwing out some numbers there that were about that, and we have the FAR that we still have to follow for lots, so it can't get over a certain size. I just did a quick calculation of a bedroom, a bath, a kitchen, a dining room, and closets, and I ended up with 882 square feet. Everybody has their own ideas. Charles?
I live in a three-bedroom, 1,200-square-foot house and have a family of three, so I live in an ADU.
I have a family of five.
Right, family, sorry, family of three kids. Which is my world, obviously. So I think that's a great housing stock, and I don't think I would want to change it. I would want to encourage providing that, because I know at Corder Madera and at the schools, there's a lot of families that want in, and they're always looking for rentals, and those are exactly the kind of units that can help soften that and allow access. So, yeah, so that.
It should have any relationship to the lot size and to the FAR, you know, up to a certain point, or a minimum size?
Right. So like I said about, I would like to ensure that there's no abuses of other policies within, like, ways of circumventing loopholes, and as long as it, if we need to institute it to stop that, then I would say yes. Otherwise, you know, I mean, personally, if we're trying to encourage ADU, right, like, as long as it's within the setbacks, could you even increase the FAR as a bonus to encourage it? And I don't know if that's been brought up, but that's just a discussion point that I personally bring forward as a question, is, you know, what's the impact of that, right? Like.
I think the one point that trying to get guidance on is, I think we got, just in terms of the 1,200 square feet.
1,200, so, fine, thanks. Yeah. I'd like some kind of noticing. I only reduce fees if it doesn't make us all go broke, and I'm fine with the deed restriction immortalizing it in those type of units, so that depending on the political whim or change of the plan, still it's captured in the deed. I think that's fine. I don't want to restrict the number of bedrooms. Of course, any incentives that you find that we could discuss, I'm happy to weigh in on those. And I personally encourage public transportation, and if anything, I'd like to see a reduction of onsite parking and parking requirements. It just allows them to be better to be built, so I'd weigh in on all of them. So, done.
Peter?
Yes.
Maybe I can make, you know, so far what we've done has worked with these seven, and as that old expression goes, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Why don't we stick with what we have? The 1,200 square footage max has its own, you know, FARs on the property, setbacks, et cetera. It's working. As long as it's working, let's not get into all of these, both this percentage of this and that percentage of that. We laid it out well, we obviously did a good job, since it's working, leave it alone.
I don't disagree. I actually though think, now I'm rethinking the deed restriction that the gentleman here brought up, that why do, like, going back to what's the purpose of it, and I was thinking about that, too, which I don't want to actually talk about now, of the purpose of, like, the Christmas tree hill, like, two-unit maximum, but I know that that needs to be.
That's the 30-day.
Talked about at some point. But the deed, no, the deed restriction also includes owner occupants, or.
That's a separate one.
Oh, okay. 30 minutes separate.
There's owner occupation as a deed restriction, and a 30-day rental as a deed restriction.
But I think the one he's wanting us to weigh in on is only the 30-day. It's already part of the deed restriction.
No, they got rid of the deed restriction on the owner occupancy, if it's an affordable unit. But I'm going to put it out there that, like, maybe by nature, again, I'm going to go back to the affordability factor, I think, asking private citizens to be in touch with what the index is. Like, I do this for a living, and I can barely manage it on my, you know, commercial properties. It's not easy to do. So I don't think that that's reasonable.
It's no enforcement issue, too.
Yeah, so I would, I'm going to put out there for consideration that we actually even consider getting rid of the deed restrictions on both the owner occupancy component and the 30-day. And what just made me think of the 30-day is that, to your point, I think the majority of renters are not, like, Corder Madera is not going to attract, like, 21-year-old, like, party animal crazy renters who are going to, like, destroy our neighborhoods in general. And the reason, and maybe we, maybe this becomes like a tax issue and stuff, if you're doing, if you're operating more like a hotel or airbnb.
Yeah, that's, I think that's.
That's the issue? Okay.
Yeah. That's really the issue.
Okay.
Is that it takes it out of the housing stock, if you need.
Okay. I won't, I won't address that one, then, but I do think we could get rid of the deed restriction on owner occupancy.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Bundy?
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving it at 1,200, and let's see how it works. I do have some concerns if we have a lot of 1,200-square-foot ADUs, that that could create parking problems in some neighborhoods.
Okay.
I'm in the minority. I would drop it down to 1,000, but, and I would start with three, I saw 300 in here someplace, like about a 300-square-foot minimum, that's a hotel room, you know, essentially, 350, 350 square foot is a hotel room, and 1,000 square foot, you know. But 1,200, we start to see, I don't know where that falls. That's a bedroom, 200 square feet, so that becomes a second bedroom from a first bedroom. So two bedrooms. It's sort of, I hate to see everything get maximized, so that's why I would say that we figure we have a scale for it, you know, clearly. You can't exceed the FAR. That 1,200 is a max. I would go along with it, not willingly, but beyond that, I would go for the, I think the 30-day deed restriction is a necessity, and I think the owner occupancy might require a little further information, that there is validity to that, some are owners that have great renters and so forth. The other reverse side of this is that somebody rents out there, they live in the 1,000-square-foot and rent out the 2,000-square-foot house. So that's suddenly, a 2,000-square-foot house becomes an ADU? No, it can't, it shouldn't.
Well, actually, okay, it doesn't. But that possibility does happen, and it happens today, but it's just the primary residence, it's still the primary residence, it's just rented.
Rented, got it. It's not defined as an ADU, then?
That's right, it's just, it's, yeah.
Okay. Happens by nature of it, all right.
And I, okay.
Yeah, so that, anyway, so you have a consensus here that everybody is 1,200-foot. I think that the noticing, everybody's kind of all over the roadmap on this, but I think that, my viewpoint is that neighbors should know, just like anything else, whether you have a business or you're proposing to do something in the neighborhood, you have to notice. I think it's appropriate to notice, but I don't know how the other members feel.
Okay.
And, Bob?
I think on the noticing that you might go to 150 feet, or just, you know, two immediate neighbors and across the street, so at least the immediate neighbors know what's going on if somebody asks.
Okay. Wonderful.
Okay, so.
And I just, you know, I just want to clarify one thing. I mean, there were some comments made that our staff report is sort of advocating for making changes to the size of the units. I think it's pretty clear in our staff report that we thought this was worthy of a conversation, and there were some considerations that we think were, the commission should discuss tonight. But I did want to make that, that comment in response to what some of the members of the public spoke about.
It's clarification, it's protection of the idea of the ADUs and to make sure that they are defined well.
I think, I think we explained very clearly in our staff report why this was up for consideration and that it wasn't, that anybody was saying we should go ahead and reduce the size of the ADUs, so, okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I think we're going to go home.
Yes.
I'm going to.
I guess we'll bring back the other item.
Yes, thank you.